I think Councilwoman Cunningham should be here shortly. All right, so we'll move on to the invocation by Councilwoman Sanchez Stevens.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for your continued provision and we ask for your wise guidance and direction as very important decisions are made for our city. We also ask you to comfort the Shetser family as Mr. Donald Shetser was a cherished member of our community and co-founder of Warbler Woods Bird Sanctuary. His lifelong dedication to preserve nature has left an unforgettable mark in our city and his legacy will continue to inspire us. We also would like to ask for your peace and comfort for friends and family of Mr. Gary Rose, who was an engaged resident in our community and attended many meetings. He will be deeply missed. Lastly, we pray for strength and comfort for our fellow Americans in Maryland who are facing the aftermath of a section collapsing of the Francis Scott Key Bridge just this morning. We pray for all first responders and that you give them the energy, direction, and clarity to help retrieve persons and vehicles. We also pray for all first responders across our country as well as our military and Border Patrol who serve selflessly. In the face of challenges and adversity, we thank you for your sovereignty and presence with us. In Jesus' name we ask, amen.
Amen. Okay, so the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Girl Scout troop 5013. Come on up ladies. If you could just turn the mic on if you don't mind. Okay, make sure it's green and then start whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you mind telling us something about you too?
Sure. Ms. Julie.
Go ahead.
My name is Deanna Settlemeyer. I am a resident of Sibolo over in Bentwood Ranch as well as our co-later, Ms. Julie Meek. We're both either currently or formerly in the military. We started this troop at the beginning of COVID, so they started in kindergarten, first grade. We've had girls that have come and gone and these are some of our most active girls. Some of them couldn't be here tonight and they are just interested in the community and helping to make it a better place. So thank you so much for having us tonight.
Thank you so much for coming out. Appreciate it. The First Proclamation is for Girl Scout of Southwest Texas. Who is reading that? Read by Councilman Randy Roberts.
Proclamation by the mayor of the city of Sibolo designating March 11th as Girl Scouts' a Southwest Texas Centennial Celebration Day. Whereas Girl Scouts of Southwest Texas celebrates its centennial on Monday, March 11th, 2024, making a century of building girls of courage, confidence, and character. And whereas Girl Scouts of Southwest Texas has a rich history built by generations of bold women and girls who took the lead and passed on their knowledge and skills to other generations. And whereas today's Girl Scouts stand on their shoulders using their voices and actions more than ever to make a difference at home and abroad. Girl Scouts create the world they want to live in and strive to make it a better, make it better every single day. And whereas Girl Scouts of Southwest Texas provides a space for these girls to dream big, be themselves, and find adventure and they have made a difference in our community for many years. And whereas every girl deserves the opportunity to thrive and through its programming, Girl Scouts of Southwest Texas works to ensure girls in our communities know they can do anything they put their minds to and minds to doing and encourages them to feel empowered and embrace their unique strengths. And whereas our city is better because of Girl Scouts of Southwest Texas, and now therefore I, Mark Allen, Mayor of Sibolo, Texas, on behalf of the Sibolo City Council, staff, and all citizens do hereby proclaim March 11th, 2024, as Girl Scouts of Southwest Texas Centennial Celebration Day in Sibolo, Texas, and extend sincere appreciation to our local Girl Scouts for their efforts to make this community a better place and to uphold the Girl Scout promise and try to help people at all times.
Okay, next up, we have Sexual Assault Awareness Month, read by Councilman Mahoney.
You want to?
I can.
Whereas every 68 seconds, another person in the United States is sexually assaulted. And in Texas, two in five women and one in five men are victims of sexual assault. And in fiscal year 2023, Thriving Hearts Crisis Center rendered 1,410 services to 452 survivors of sexual violence and provided 124 hospital accompaniments for sexual assault victims. And whereas according to a study conducted by the Texas Association Against Sexual Assault and the University of Texas at Austin Institute on Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault, approximately 6.3 million Texans have been sexually victimized. And whereas most victims are sexually assaulted by someone they know and 91% of victims did not report to police. And whereas it is appropriate to salute the more than 20 million victims who have survived sexual assault in the United States and the efforts of victims, volunteers, and professionals who combat sexual assault. And whereas national and community organizations and private sector supporters should be recognized and applauded for their work in promoting awareness about sexual assault. And whereas police, forensic workers, and prosecutors should be recognized and commended for their hard work and innovative strategies to increase the percentage of sexual assault cases that resolve in the prosecution and incarceration of offenders. And whereas sexual violence is a persistent and pervasive problem in our society, one that requires attention year-round, and in order to foster healthy communities, all citizens must support the effort to end sexual violence every month of the year. And whereas national and community organizations, businesses in the private sector, and the media are urged through national sexual assault awareness of sexual violence and strategies to decrease the incidence of sexual assault. And now therefore I, Mark Allen, Mayor of Sibolo, Texas, on behalf of the Sibolo City Council, staff, and all citizens do hereby proclaim April 2024 as National Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month in Sibolo, Texas, and urge all citizens to observe this month by supporting the goals and ideas of victims and those working toward awareness and prevention and by participating in community efforts.
I think I did that last year.
Okay, welcome.
Hi. As we approach April, we enter a month dedicated to sexual assault awareness. It is a time to stand in solidarity with survivors and raise awareness. My name is Reagan. I'm the Community Engagement Specialist at Thriving Hearts Crisis Center, which was formerly known as Guadalupe Valley Family Violet Shelter. At Thriving Hearts, we are dedicated to supporting survivors of sexual assault and intimate partner violence across four counties. We understand the profound impact these traumas can have on individuals and communities, which is why we offer a comprehensive range of services, all free of charge. Our services include 24/7 crisis hotline, emergency shelter, counseling and support groups, safety planning, victims advocacy, accompaniment to court, medical appointments, and law enforcement. We also offer parenting programs, legal advocacy, sexual assault advocacy, case management, and information and referrals. These services are designed to provide survivors with the support and resources they need to heal and rebuild their lives. One upcoming event that we are excited about is Denim Day on April 24th. Denim Day is an opportunity for us to come together as a community to support survivors of sexual assault and spread awareness about the importance of consent and ending sexual violence. We invite you all to join us at the Sibolo Multi-Event Complex from 5:30 to 7:30. It's open to all ages and we encourage everyone to wear jeans to show their support. During Denim Day, we'll have a performance by Natalie Rose, guest speakers, a Denim Day walk, and some fun games. It is a chance for us to come together, show our support for survivors, and demonstrate our commitment to ending sexual violence in our communities. Thank you for allowing us to share our mission with you today. Together, let's work towards a future where everyone feels safe, respected, and empowered. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming out tonight and thank you very much for everything your organization does for our county. Thank you. All right, next up, we have the Crime Victims' Rights Week, and that is read by Councilwoman Sanchez Stevens.
Proclamation, designation of April 21st through 27th, 2024, as National Crime Victims' Rights Week. Whereas Crime Victims' Rights Act passed here in Texas in 1985 to guarantee victims the right to meaningfully participate and use their voice in the criminal justice process. And whereas victim service providers, advocates, law enforcement officers, attorneys, and other allied professionals can help survivors find justice by enforcing these rights. And whereas the survivors are informed of their options and their voices are heard. And whereas engaging survivors creates responses and services that are credible, meaningful, and centered on individual needs. And whereas survivors' experiences can catalyze implementing innovative programs, shifting existing programs in new directions, and changing policies that will provide hope for all survivors. And whereas National Crime Victims' Rights Week provides an opportunity to commit to supporting crime survivors in providing options, services, and hope where decisions are made that could impact them. And whereas Sibolo Police Department is hereby dedicated to amplifying the voices of survivors and creating an environment where survivors have the confidence that they will be heard, believed, and supported. Now, Mark Allen, Mayor of Sibolo, Texas, does hereby recognize April 21st through 27th, 2024, as Crime Victims' Rights Week in Sibolo, Texas, and reaffirms this city's commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crime during Crime Victims' Rights Week and throughout the year, and expressing our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Sanchez Stevens. And if you could come on down, Mrs. Story and Mrs. Chandler.
27th as National Crime Victim Rights Week. Many of you may know, my name is Krista Chandler and I'm proud to say I am the Victim Services Coordinator for Sibley Police Department full-time. Thanks to your support, I wanted to just let you know that in, excuse me, in the year of 2023, I provided over 1,100 services to 212 crime victims for the city of Sibolo. This accomplishment would not be possible without the immense support of the council, the mayor, the police department, agency partners, as you see here with me tonight, and the community members. So I do appreciate you recognizing this week and your support.
Thank you so much, Ms. Chandler. All right, next up, we have Child Abuse Prevention Month, read by Councilman Hicks.
Thank you, Mayor. Proclamation by the mayor of the city of Sibolo designating April as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. Whereas more than 63,989 cases of child abuse and neglect were confirmed in Texas during 2023. And whereas there were 277 confirmed victims of child abuse and neglect in Guadalupe County in 2023. And whereas child abuse prevention is a community responsibility and finding solutions depends on involvement among all people. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote and support programs that benefit children and their families. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among a variety of entities, including but not limited to schools, religious organizations, law enforcement agencies, child protective services, prosecution agencies, medical professionals, mental health professionals, child advocacy centers, court-appointed special advocates, and other community-based nonprofit organizations. And whereas everyone in the community should become more aware of child abuse prevention and consider helping parents raise their children in safe, nurturing environments as well as supporting local professionals dedicated to meeting the needs of children, of child abuse victims. And now therefore, Mark Allen, the mayor of the city of Sibolo, Texas, on behalf of the Sibolo City Council, staff, and all citizens do hereby proclaim April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month in Sibolo, Texas, and urge all citizens to work together to reduce child abuse and neglect and to significantly improve the response of our community when child abuse occurs in the months and years ahead.
Okay, Ms. Meehan, come on down, Ms. Meehan.
Thank you.
Commissions, Court.
All y'all, come on up.
Good luck, guys.
Yeah, I'm good, ready.
All right, so I'm Michelle Meehan from the Guadalupe County Children's Advocacy Center and I just want to thank all of you in the city of Sibolo for our continued support and partnership when it comes to protecting our kids and raising awareness. And so a little bit about the advocacy center, we are a nonprofit agency that provides services to our kids and families in Guadalupe County. And we work with our multidisciplinary team and partner agencies, law enforcement, the Department of Family Protective Services, prosecution, medical, mental health professionals, and CASA. And together, we just help kids when they are involved either as a victim of a crime or a witness to a crime. And our agency provides specific services to them during the investigative process. And I'll go over a little bit of what we did last year. So last year, we provided services to 782 children in Guadalupe County. We provided 511 forensic interviews, and that is giving kids a time and space and opportunity to talk about their experience. And then when that is happening, we provide advocacy services to our nonoffending caregivers and we provided 338 advocacy sessions last year to our families. We had 243 kiddos in therapy and they received 2,706 sessions last year. And we had 51 caregivers and they received 522 sessions. We also do community awareness activities and prevention programs. And we had 60 children complete the Rad Kids, which is a personal empowerment safety course. And we started a new program as well with Monique Burr Foundation called Teen Safety Matters. And we had 140 children complete that program last year. So both of those are growing and expanding so we can reach more kids in our county. And all of our services are free to our clients. So we have some events coming up. April 1st kicks off the month for child abuse prevention awareness and we will be placing our pinwheel displays throughout the community. So starting at 9 o'clock, we're going to get started at the soccer field, so come on out and join us. And we have three different teams. So we're going to have a team in shirts, a Sibolo team, and then Marion and up to Seguin. So wherever you're at, come out and join us and we'll have pinwheels out. And each, each pinwheel will represent one of the 782 kids that we provided services to. 9:00 AM, yes. Along with our pinwheels, we have our Champions for Courageous Children campaign and that runs through the entire month. And so to support that, you can text G C C A C to 44321. And then we have our shirts designer, Pers Bingo, coming up on Thursday, May 9th at McCulkey Hall. So tickets will go on sale for that April 30th. And then we'll have our bowling night in the summer. So stay tuned for all of those. So thank you so much for your support.
Thank you so much, Ms. Meehan. And thank you so much for everything you do.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Jade Dimitri with CASA of Central Texas. I do community engagement. And I'm here with my colleague, Susan Hankin. She's one of our casework supervisors. CASA is quarter-pointed special advocates. We're happy to be here to thank you for your support, the city of Sibolo, as well as our other partners, the Children's Advocacy Center, SJRC Belong, and every other agency that works to protect and advocate for children. Just a couple of stats for CASA of Central Texas. Last year, for our four-county area, we served 500 children in the foster care system. That means they had a dedicated, trained CASA volunteer to advocate directly to a judge on their behalf, get to know them, visit them, talk to all the parties in the case, find out how they're doing, and advocate for any services that they're not receiving, as well as advocacy outside of the courtroom as well. In Guadalupe County, we're really working hard to up our service percentage. We were only able to serve 32% of the children in Guadalupe County last year. And we are working hard to recruit volunteers and increase awareness about CASA and what we do so that we can do that. Another note is our upcoming fundraiser on April 5th, Cruise Take a Cruise with CASA. That's a fundraiser to help us do exactly what I just spoke to you about, which is advocate for kids and families. It's in New Braunfels. It's a lovely, fun night, live and silent auctions, dinner, entertainment, all the things. So that's, again, that's Friday, April 5th, and it's cruise-themed, so super fun. But thank you to the city council, mayor, and all of our partners here. It's going to take all of us to get to 100% service rate for CASA in Guadalupe County, so we appreciate your support.
Thank you so much for everything you do. Appreciate it.
All right, how y'all doing?
Welcome.
I was not prepared, that I were told that I was going to be speaking tonight, so I'll just give a quick rundown. I'm Loki.
Well, I apologize for that because your members were at the Commissioners Court this morning. They spoke. If you could just give the rest of council a little bit of background of what y'all do and what y'all perform.
Yes, sir. I'm Loki. I'm a member of Bikers Against Child Abuse here in San Antonio. We're a 501(c)(3) organization. We work with a lot of these agencies as well. They will reach out to us, inform us of a child that has been abused, that is going through a situation and living in fear. That's where we come in. We empower the children to no longer live in a world of fear, to allow them to be kids. I'm sorry, I'm about to tear up right now because there's too many kids. So I appreciate what y'all are doing, but we are the ones that will go to court with these kids. We will protect these children. If need be, we will stand 24/7 around a house, which we have done, to protect this child. No child deserves to live in fear. That's basically what we do.
Thank you.
Good evening. First off, I just want to thank everyone for your continued dedication to ensuring that children and families in Sibolo are safe. And we, my name is Kane Jaggers. I am the Senior Regional Director for Belong. We are the lead provider of community-based care here in Guadalupe County as well as 26 other rural communities. Essentially, we oversee the foster care system once that child has to be removed from their home environment due to abuse and neglect. We work in both community and family enrichment as well. And so really trying to pour into families who have never had to experience abuse or neglect to ensure that families, caregivers feel supported by their community to continue the hard job of being a parent or a caretaker of others. So thank y'all so much for allowing us to come and speak today.
Thank you so much. All right, next up, we're going to have Mr. Patrick Pinder come on down to the microphone for a special presentation.
You are a hard man to plan for, I can tell you that. So Chief, for the last month, I've tried to get with you. I had to recruit some help. You were the recipient of the Fire Chief of the Year Award from the County Fire Association. You were nominated by a pitch tribe.
Congratulations, Chief.
Chief, you were nominated by the volunteer fire departments for your work in Guadalupe County and the things you've done for them and these communities around us. So for that, we congratulate you, sir.
Thank you very much. Definitely a surprise. Did not know nothing about this, but I can honestly say I couldn't have done it without the men and women that are behind me here today. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Let's get a picture of you quick. Let's get a picture of your wife. You are hard to plan for.
All of these people. We hit a fire truck in the back.
That was a recent.
All those text messages between your wife and everybody. There you go.
All those text messages between your wife and everybody. There you go.
Congratulations, Chief. All right, next up is Citizens to Be Heard. This is the only time during the council meeting that a citizen can address the city council. It is the opportunity for visitors and guests to address the city council on any issue, to include agenda items. All visitors wishing to speak must fill out the sign-in roster prior to the start of the meeting. The city council may not deliberate any non-agenda issue, nor may any action be taken on any non-agenda issue at this time. However, the city council may present a factual response to items brought up by citizens. Attorney General Opinion J C O 169, limit of three minutes each. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body. Remarks may also be addressed to any individual member of the council so long as the remarks are about matters of local public concern and not disruptive to the meeting or threatening to the member or any attendee. Any person violating this policy may be requested to leave the meeting, but no person may be requested or forced to leave the meeting because of a viewpoint expressed. This meeting is livestreamed. If anyone would like to make comments on any matter regarding the city of Siblo or an agenda item and have this item read at the meeting, please email psemics@siblotx.gov and vchapman@siblotx.gov or call 210-566-6111 before 5:00 PM, the date of the meeting. First up, we have Mr. Bruce Winter. Welcome, Bruce. How are you, sir? Been a while. And just make sure the microphone's on green and then speak into it, sir. Thank you, Bruce.
I want to say I live at 340 Silverwing in the Falcon Ridge subdivision, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight about the road repairs slated for Firebird Run in Silverwing in the Falcon Ridge subdivision. I understood these repairs were part of the plan for nine streets to be rebuilt. And these two streets are next to be rebuilt under that plan. I do want to thank the past and present city council, CIP committee members and staff for developing this road construction plan concerning the nine streets. I understand it's not an easy task to do all this. The city needs to ensure the streets of the first new Siblo subdivision developed in the early 2000s are maintained to ensure the streets are safe. As I remember, when the building boom began in 2001, the city did not utilize the same road construction standards it now uses. There are many streets in Falcon Ridge in the same general area that are experiencing the same problems. When I was a member of the Streets and Drainage Commission in the early 2000s, underlying water issues came to light at a Streets and Drainage Committee meeting when discussion of the streets in Falcon Ridge were discussed. Mr. Gutierrez, who has passed away since, was in attendance about his waste trucks leaking hydraulic fluid on the streets. He suddenly stood up during the discussion about the streets and basically stated that everyone in the area knows about the water running downhill under the black clay in that area. The home builder even rebuilt intersections that were sinking before and after homes were constructed. There are many concerns about Firebird Run, such as serious safety issues while driving, underground city and utility infrastructure at risk for failure, water drainage issues, property values. Silverwing is a main artery connecting Siblo Valley Drive to Thistle Creek that leads out to FM 3009, which does not have the same issues as the streets that feed into it. However, from the steel cracking that is done annually, it is obvious the street is experiencing underground issues. The street has a large area of alligator cracking between the community pool and Siblo Valley Drive. The street was repaired multiple times at the drainage ditch box covers between Firebird Run and Hawk Circle. Another issue Silverwing had over a decade ago was when water from a water leak followed an underground path from Jaeger Circle near Mystic Way down to Firebird Run and Silverwing intersection. The bond issue provided the funding a few years ago for this road construction. Why are we pushing it two years further out on the calendar? Cost of construction will only increase the longer the construction is delayed. Just as the city expects homeowners to maintain their aging properties in accordance with city ordinances, the residents expect the city to maintain the aging infrastructure to ensure their fire and safety property values are maintained. Please consider proceeding with the repair of Firebird Run in Silverwing on schedule and not extending it out to 2026 and 2027. Thank you for your time and allowing me to address this issue. It was greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. Next up is Jorge, is it Maricas? Okay. Welcome, Jorge.
Good evening. My name is Jorge Manriquez. I've been living on Firebird Run for almost 18 years now. Seen it from dirt to now a nice community. It's just disgusting going down my street every day, coming home from work, picking up my kids from school, having to apologize to the delivery driver that's delivering my pizza because he's, you know, it's just, it's just bad. So I had a, I was thinking about writing a speech, but what the heck? It's just a horrible road, right? Can't be too bad. Just like the gentleman said recently, can we get this fixed as soon as possible and not wait 2026, 2027? And if you haven't been on Firebird Run, I invite you to go down there. Take your wife and your kids, and you can go down the roller coaster that we go every day. And you'll see what we're talking about. You'll realize that some of these buses and teenage kids and kids on their bikes, what they're going through every single day when they go down our street, when they got a drainage ditch sticking about four inches off the ground. So that's all I can tell you. You have to go see for yourself, and you'll realize what we're going through.
Thank you, Jorge. Appreciate your time, sir. Next up is April D. Johns. Welcome, April.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Allen and Honorable Members of the City Council. My name is April Johns, and I am one of the original residents of the Street Firebird Run in the Falcon Ridge community of Siblo. Today, I stand before you to address a matter that has deeply concerned our community for far too long, the dire condition of Firebird Run. Seventeen years ago, my then-growing family chose to move to the city of Siblo for all it had to offer, a close-knit community, a lower cost of living, its tranquility, and the quality of life. We still continue to believe that Siblo is a fabulous city to live in. However, for years, Firebird Run has been neglected. The street has deteriorated into a hazardous obstacle course for residents and motorists alike. In front of my house, there is a manhole cover that protrudes from the street at least three inches. Every day, when we leave our house or come home, we have to maneuver around it. The street is uneven from one end to the other, and the basic infrastructure of the street is in disrepair. This neglect has not only compromised the safety of those who live and traverse on the street, but has also significantly diminished the quality of our life, of the life in our neighborhood. The consequences of this neglect are profound. Our vehicles suffer damages that impose financial burdens on already strained households. Emergency services face delays in response times due to poor structure on the street. Visitors that come into our neighborhood always make comments about the horrendous state of our street. Family friends even make fun of it, bringing their families to drive down it because it reminds them of riding a roller coaster. I encourage you all to review the mission statement of the Public Works Department of Siblo. It states, "The Public Works Department remains fully committed to providing the citizens of Siblo with a community they can thrive in and be proud of by effectively and efficiently implementing proper planning, sound decision-making, and wise resource management." If this were the case, Firebird Run would not continuously go unnoticed and other streets be prioritized. I understand that municipal budgets are finite, and difficult decisions must be made regarding resource allocation and which streets should be repaired first and in which order. However, the prolonged neglect of Firebird Run is unacceptable and cannot be justified. I live and work in Siblo, and our tax dollars are meant to ensure the safety and well-being of all residents, yet it seems that our community has been overlooked time and again. I urge the city council to prioritize the repair and maintenance of Firebird Run as a matter of the utmost urgency. This is not merely a matter of convenience. It is a matter of public safety and equity. Every resident of our city deserves access to safe and well-maintained infrastructure. In conclusion, I call upon the city council to take decisive action to address the dire condition of Firebird Run. Our community has waited patiently, patiently for far too long, and we can no longer wait. The time for action is now. Thank you for your attention and your commitment to serving the needs of all our residents of our city. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Johns. Next up is Ashley Ritchie. Welcome, Ashley.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name's Ashley Ritchie. I am the Business Engagement Manager with the Shirts Economic Development Corporation, and I'm also a member of this year's Leadership Core Class with the Chamber. So I'm just here to observe your meeting tonight, so thank you.
All right, welcome. Thank you, Ashley. All right, next up is Seegers, is it Merrick? Welcome. Welcome, the Seegers. Is it Mary? Marie? I'm sorry, Marie Seegers?
Mary.
Mary, sorry, Mary.
Yeah, I also live on Firebird Run. I'd like to thank everyone for your time and for all the city workers that come out to help us. But I would like to stress how important it is to get the street fixed as soon as possible. If I'm not mistaken, Firebird Run, from Blackhawk Sky to Silverwing, is in District 6, and from Blackhawk Sky to Kipper is District 2. I would hope both city councilmen have driven down that street to see just how bad it is. There is a dip kitty-corner from my house. It probably doesn't look menacing, but from my house, I can hear cars hitting it. I've seen sparks fly. I've seen chunks of asphalt, maybe some car come off of it. When we have company come, I beg them, like, the street is bad. Watch your speed. They don't think that I mean it's really as bad as it is. So some of them have still hit it. There's also a manhole cover on our side of the street that frequently sinks several inches, and then they'll come out and fill it, and then it sinks again, so they're constantly filling it. Right now, it's about three inches higher than the rest of the road, and it's already sunk about a half an inch, so it's going to have to be filled again. There's no way the street is going to last two or three more years. We've got to get it done now. I also invite everyone to take a little trip down there. It's horrible. Don't go the speed limit. Go a little bit slower and enjoy the ride.
Thank you so much for your time tonight. Appreciate it, Mary. All right, next up is Linda Klepper. Welcome, Linda.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm used to saying this to a different body in Shirts. I am the Public Affairs Director for the city of Shirts. As Ashley said, we're here from the Chambers Core Leadership Class, so we're just here to observe your council meeting tonight.
All right, welcome. Thanks, Linda. All right, next up is Diana, is it Weiner? Weiner, sorry. Welcome, Diana.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Diana Weimer. I live in Charleston Park, and we too have the issues with the road, but I'm actually here to talk about zoning, and it's very frustrating. Mr. Alvez has requested to cup some property, and so I always go to zoning first. And when I make my RRO request, I'm always provided with a map and never an ordinance. And I know for a fact that in 2010, Mr. Alvez had come to the city council and come to the Planning and Zoning Committee in order to make the first acre C1, a commercial, light commercial, and then the remaining of the property, he wanted to make it an R5, which was townhomes and condos. The C1 passed. In fact, it is an ordinance number 926. And the R5 did not pass. It was denied. So that was never zoned. But if you go back and you look at the May 25th meetings for that ordinance of 826, I'm trying to read this without my glasses, sorry, 826, it states in there that they were transitioning the property from a no-zone to a C1. Now I'm getting maps from the city that says, oh, well, this is 2018, and it was an SF3. And then I find a 2023 map, and it's now going to be an SF6. So I'm like, well, how did this happen? So one of the things I noticed about the maps is that they never designated that one acre SC1. They never colored it that color. And so if I go to the 2018 map that was provided to me in my recent RRO, and you look at those orange colors, and they're slightly variegated. You can make a difference, but not quite a difference. And the C colors can be anything from C1 Neighborhood Commercial, which that one acre is, MF Multi-Family Residential, no, and SF3 Mixed Density Residential. We've gone from no-zone, without an ordinance, to SF3 Mixed Density Residential. If you look at the existing use map in the 2016 Comprehensive Plan, you will see that it was designated as a single-family light density residence. So my point is, is that the error is completely, is compounded constantly by using a map instead of an ordinance. And I have done extensive research. I provided it to you in this. I actually created a much better version of the zoning portion. If you're interested in trying to track it, I would be willing to give you a copy of it. And I appreciate your time, and I hope we can work towards taking care of this problem. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. All right, next up, we have seven emails to be read by our city secretary.
Okay. This is from Ann Brayhan on 108 Firebird Run. Unfortunately, I will be unable to attend the meeting tonight due to other commitments, but as a resident on Firebird Run, I am totally for speeding up the repaving to 2025. I live at 108 Firebird Run, and from my home down to end of Firebird near Borgfeld, it is not only awful for cars, but any vehicles going through daily. It's actually also bad for walkers and kids crossing. I have a Civic that is low to the ground, and if I go over the water main area that is up at speed limit, can bottom out because of the dip before and after it. I have pictures attached. These are the really bad parts in the 100 block, but driving down off of Silverwing, it's like a roller coaster ride. I truly hope you consider this as a vote from us to expedite the paving. Thank you, Ann Brayhan, 108 Firebird Run. The next one is Alethea and Winston. To whom it may concern, submitting requests that Firebird Run be reconstructed in this year at the earliest date possible. I have a back injury, and those roads aggravate it each time we drive down it. I was wondering to whom I could voice a complaint to in order to get it done ASAP before anything else is done in the area. Not only that, our vehicle has began to make a noise from all of the dips in the road, and we drive slowly. I think waiting another year is too long. It is causing too many damages to our vehicles and to people with pre-existing injuries. I would like to also raise the concern of the constant issue at our front entrance Crimson Tree. I brought this up to one of the board members a few years ago. Our entrance center island needs to be removed and placed off the side as the other entrances to Falcon Ridge because the buses have a hard time swinging in due to the owner on the corner parks all of his cars on that corner. It causes traffic jam and near accidents to even nearly hitting children on their bikes because there's no room to think quick turning in. Please evaluate that area as well. It would like nicer if all entrances were uniform. Thank you in advance. Blessings. Sincerely, Alethea and Winston. Next one is from John Justin at 617 Albarella. I was informed during our next Siblo City Council meeting, there is an agenda item titled Discussion Action on the Acceleration of the Remaining Capital Improvement Projects, CIP, in fiscal year '26 and fiscal year '27 into fiscal year '25 to include Green Valley Road Section 1, Green Valley Road Section 2, Silverwing, and Firebird Lane. In the best interest of Siblo residents, the city needs to move forward with these efforts in fiscal year '25. efforts in fiscal year '25. With continued delays to FM 1103 and new construction efforts across our city, our citizens have a right to safe roadways. FM 1103 is now, based on original plans, approximately 10 years delayed, and with hope tax dot resumes this project in summer 2024, Phase One of that project is still two to three years out from completion. For Sibilo City Council members to ask residents for continued patience on Green Valley, Silverwing, and Firebird Lane repairs only reinforces the narrative that our tax dollars are for special interest projects and not the health and welfare of our community. It is time for the city to move forward on these projects now and not wait until FY26 and FY27. Thank you, John Jessen, 617 Albarella. I would like to see Firebird Run recon- I'm sorry, this is from Lloyd Joppy at 216 Firebird Run. I would like to see Firebird Run reconstructed as soon as possible. I have complained to your road repair manager for the last three years about this. This road has sunk enough that the manhole covers are now significantly above the road surface. I cannot imagine any road worse than our Firebird Run. Thank you, Lloyd Joppy, 216 Firebird Run. This is from Charlie McLennan. I'll submit this in the event I can't attend the council meeting as per Mark Allen. I'd like to see Green Valley Road placed at the top of the agenda for reconstruction, widening, paving, drainage, striping, et cetera. If you drive it, you understand it's a disaster. This is from Matt and Wendy Parker at 212 Firebird Run. I am responding to the agenda item regarding Firebird Run being reconstructed. The roads need to be done now. This road has been on the list many years and is horrible to drive down and is damaging our vehicles. If my options are for 2025 or later, I am voting for 2025. This road should have never been left in the condition it is in for as long as it has been. We have sent many complaints over the years to be told we were next on the list, so this timeline is ridiculous. Thank you, Matt and Wendy Parker. This is from Mr. Roger McDowell. To whom it may concern, Firebird Run needs to be top priority for road maintenance. It is the absolute worst road in Sibilo. We see cars bottom out all the time. The sewage manholes stick way above where they should. Feel free to contact me if you have any questions. Roger McDowell, 205 Firebird Run.
All right, thank you very much. All right, moving on to item number seven, Consent Agenda. All items listed below are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda.
I'd like to remove 7C, 7D.
That's the check register and revenue expense report?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the others?
We approve 7A, B, E, and F.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Peggy, do you have it ready? Motion carries 7-0. And so as far as discussion for C and D, Mr. Hicks?
I was just looking at the last. I'm not too impressed or happy with the format or the setup, because in the past, we would get with our check registers, they would show amounts, and I don't know if maybe they were on there and they got cut off, but there's no amounts on here. It just shows who, what, and to whom. And it's different. I mean, because I was looking at the last months, and it's different along with the finance. You've got several pages that are cut off where I don't have all the information on it, and I can only assume that it's the format that we've just recently went to, because I can't approve these if I don't know all the information. I mean, the information's cut off.
Mr. Hicks, Mayor and Council, so I'm looking at the packet here. I understand the problem that you're describing, Mr. Hicks. You can certainly continue these to the next meeting. I'm looking at the online agenda. The amounts are listed with each one, so we will send this to you in a PDF to where you see the whole report.
In our PDF packets. It was emailed to everyone.
So again, we understand that this packet had some issues with printing and getting to the council members. We're working with the new software, and we're going to ensure that you receive or have access both via online, where you just check out the website, and you pull up the agenda, and you click on all the items, and we'll continue the past practice that Ms. Simics had done, where she emails you each agenda item by email as well.
Well, I do appreciate that, because it makes it easier if we've got something we want to go back to.
Yes, sir.
Instead of this new format, I have to go through the entire, I have to wait for it to completely download. Once it downloads, then I have to scan through all of them.
Yes, sir.
Whereas before, we just click on it, look it up, and it makes it much easier. Thank you.
You're welcome. And so if you want to continue these to the next meeting, there's no urgency that you have to approve the check register tonight or the December revenue and expense.
I'll make a motion to Table 7C and 7D to the next council meeting.
Okay. So Councilman Mahoney seconded it. We'll go roll call, starting with-
Oh, C and D, okay. I'll make a motion to Table 7D to the next council meeting.
Okay, moving on to item eight, Discussion Action A. Discussion Action on the Acceleration of the Remaining Capital Improvement Projects in Financial Year '26 and '27 into 2025 to include Green Valley Road Section 1, Green Valley Road Section 2, Silverwing, and Firebird Lane. Mr. Gomez, how you doing, sir?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So tonight, as we discussed in the last council meeting on March 12th, the current five-year CIP has six remaining projects, two in FY25, which are Deer Creek and Town Creek Boulevard, three projects in FY26, which are Green Valley Road from Sibilo Valley Drive to Hollowbrook Drive, Green Valley Road from Dean to Westmont and Firebird Run, and one project in FY27, which is Silverwing. And we're recommending to accelerate these projects into FY26, I mean, into FY25, and I know we presented council with additional information that they requested per the last council meeting. We, so in September of 2003, the council approved the five-year CIP plan. We also council approved the work order for the acceleration of the design for these projects in August of '23, and so we have, we're proceeding with the design for those projects, and we'll have all that design, as we discussed, completed in April of this year for council's consideration for acceleration. Currently, right now, we have the two projects, the overlay projects, we have them at 90% design, and the other projects are between 50% to 80% complete for council's consideration for acceleration of these projects. So we're looking for council's decision and action on their recommendation, and if there's any additional information that y'all need tonight to discuss on what we need to do in order to get these projects accelerated, or just keep them into the current fiscal years that they're allotted for.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. I appreciate your help with this and working with us as the CIP manager to prioritize these important road projects. I know that some of us were on council back in the year 2020, and that's when we did come up with the list, you know, the Sibilo Valley Drive plus nine other roads. And so these roads are on that list of what was then called nine other roads, and that was in the year 2020. So here we are in the year 2024, and so we still need to get these roads completed so we can move on to prioritizing other roads within Sibilo. Obviously, these aren't the only 10 roads in Sibilo that need to be fixed. And so as, you know, elected officials, it's our responsibility to see to it that our roads are fixed in a timely manner and that we're able to deliver on the promises that we've made to our citizens even four years ago. And so with a road project that is out of our control, which is one of our biggest roads that's going through Sibilo, you know, there are delays with that particular road project, but we can, we have the power to fix the roads that we are responsible to fix. And so that's why I think it would be prudent for Sibilo City Council to move these roads up and get them done so we can start looking at the next list. And so I'm going to open it up for discussion and go in order. So we'll start with Councilman Benson.
Yeah, I think my concerns on moving up is that we have some unknown budget issues as the budget year approaches. There are some things that are definitely unknown as we head into this with projected revenues, sales, property taxes. And I think, you know, honestly, this is a conversation that we'd much better had in June or July when we have those items, but I think now to sort of hope. I mean, one of the slides in here, I think it says at the bottom, I was going to read it, it says, note, this presentation excludes wastewater projects associated with new access in the CCN. So, you know, heaven forbid somebody comes down tomorrow and drops a permit in and says, hey, we need water to go to the south plant. I mean, I think when we look at our bonding capacity and what we have, we need to be a little bit more prudent than to say, let's move stuff up as fast as we can. And so I'm a little concerned about that, and I think we ought to just be a little more measured. If in June or July, we have better numbers, then that would be worth revisiting, but I think in March, it's a little bit premature in my mind to say, yeah, let's go out and get a bond and pay for these roads right now and move them up. If we want to talk about what roads ought to be on the list, I think that's a better conversation than adding roads to the list, because, you know, Ms. Cunningham, last meeting, mentioned all these roads are not in her district, and I appreciate that. She pointed that they're in mine. They are not. None of them are. So her direction that somehow the CIP committee was directing roads to her district was noted, but not right. And I would say that some of those roads that are near my district probably don't need to be on the list as soon as maybe some of these others. So I think if we want to have a discussion about changing the roads that get done in '25, I would have that conversation today, but I'm not prepared to have a conversation about borrowing more money without some of the unknowns in the budgetary cycle being known. So that's where I'm at tonight, still there.
Councilman Roberts.
I mean, obviously, this has been going, an ongoing issue. The roads do need to be done. However, I'm quite certainly going to echo what Mr. Benson has already stated. We just have, we do have a lot of unknowns here. You know, property values will be going down. They reached a peak. They have come back down moderated a little bit. Sales tax revenue is not looking like we thought it would. It's just a little concerning to push them up, but that's just my opinion.
Councilman Mahoney.
I'm just going to say in general, I think we've kicked the can down the ruck too far on some of these, and we need to keep a promise to the citizens to get them done. And so I'm in favor of accelerating these. If June, July, something comes along where we have, we can articulate reasons to delay, okay, we can reexamine it, but I'd like to get them moving.
Agreed. Councilwoman Cunningham.
So to circle back to what Mr. Benson said, looking at the map and even looking at the list of the approved capital improvement projects, there's three in District 3, three in District 5, three in District 6. My point at the last meeting was that District 4 has the most people by a lot out of any district in the city. We have 8,000 people plus in District 4, and there's no projects in District 4. So my recommendation was moving forward with our CIP list, not taking any of these existing roads off, but when moving forward, make it more equitable between the city. If we have a district that has the most amount of people, they're also paying tax dollars into the city. They should also see some of that tax money coming back to their area. I have driven all of these roads. I think that in order to make an informed decision, we need to be driving the roads. I do not think it's realistic to kick Firebird Run down the road any longer. I didn't mean to make that pun. I'm sorry, that was a really bad one. We can't just keep pushing that one off. That one is very bad, and it's only going to get worse. Silverwing was one that I was questioning, why it was even on the list to begin with, because it's not, you drive down my street, you drive down most streets in Sibilo. That one doesn't even rank top 10 in my mind, but it is just a mill and overlay. I would think that that one might be a safe one to keep in '26. Firebird Run, though, is very bad. I'd like to see about the Green Valley Low Water Crossing and the Deer Creek Drainage, if those can be done without having to do the roads that are linked with them. I'm sure that's more money, but we do have some drainage issues that need to be addressed. And then we've been talking about Town Creek Road for a while. So if I had to list these in priority, it'd be Firebird Run and Town Creek, and then looking at the ones with the low water crossing. That would be my, if we're able to accelerate them, Deer Creek for sure and Town Creek.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sancho Stevens.
I think it's important to also be a little bit more transparent as to the funding aspect of all of this. Just, excuse me, being newly on council, I found out about this CIP five-year program, and come to find out that we, as voters, we voted for these nine roads to be bonded. Come to find out, by the time that the project actually began, cost of construction post-pandemic, everything went up, and Sibilo Valley Drive absorbed a lot of those funds that were supposed to be intended for these entire nine roads. So it leaves us in a financial predicament that everything is really expensive right now, and, you know, do we want to finance? Do we want to take out more debt to accelerate these things? So this is a very weighted decision to make. So to Mr. Benson's point, we haven't even looked at the budget to see last city council meeting. It was presented to us that, you know, sales revenue was lower than predicted, so that was a little bit of a blow, you know, I think, in my mind. And if I, I agree with Mr. Benson in that we need to really relook at the budget. However, in the order that our projected streets are prioritized, I noticed that in 2025, we have listed Town Creek Road and Deer Creek Boulevard. Deer Creek Boulevard, I would suggest pushing that back and pushing up Firebird Run, because I agree with you. Firebird Run needs to be done immediately, doing some mules on wheels. I traveled that road, and I have felt and experienced what that feels like. So having said that, I'm for bringing up Firebird Run. However, I would also like to be fiscally responsible, being that it is our tax dollars, and we are going to be acquiring more debt. And on top of that, we're going to be acquiring new administrative resources such as inspectors and possibly a finance person just as well, coming short of under just $300,000. And we just had Town Creek residents just as well mentioned, hey, we would like a sidewalk in Town Creek. And these are resources that could come from our general fund just as well to give those residents a sidewalk as opposed to hiring more staff. If we could just reprioritize these remaining roads, I think that would be ideal, and being more fiscally responsible and seeing where we are on the budget.
Councilman Hetzel.
Thank you very much there. Just as a point, I appreciate that you've been there for 18 years or so. In my particular case, I've been there for over 30 years, so I'm very familiar with those roads. And they needed, and I appreciate the equity for the newer divisions, but thank you very much. Talk to you in another 10 or 15 years, because this is what's happened. These people have been paying taxes for a long, long time, and I think they need to be, we need to be able to look at them in the eye and say, we support you. That's it.
Thank you very much. Councilman Hicks.
You know, a lot of what some of these other coun-
You know, a lot of what some of these other council members have said, I have to concur. As Mr. Hetzel stated, I, I sat there and I watched those subdivisions get built. That's how long I've been here. So it is concerning. I, I'm with Ms. Sanchez on the fact that, you know, and, and Mrs. Cunningham of moving up Firebird Run. One of my daughter's friends lives on that road, and, and two years ago, it was horrible. Three years ago, it was horrible. It, it just, it's, it's a, like they stated, a roller coaster. I could see moving that one up. I could see, for safety purposes, moving the Green Valley Drainage, which would be the Dean Road portion, moving that one up. But Town Creek, they were in here the last month, twice complaining about getting Town Creek fixed. But as Ms. Sanchez stated, you know, we, we've got budget, you know, as, as fiscally responsible for our taxpayers' dollars. We're going to have to go out, and we're going to have to borrow money. And I don't know that the, the citizens realize that, that I was on council when we voted for that $10 million to go to the nine roads. And at that time, I, I wasn't sure. I, I'm, I'm pretty sure I voted against it, because I wasn't sure that we were going to be able to get these done. I think I was the only one that voted against it, because I've seen bond projects in the past. We can go to Haverhill Road right now. That didn't pass in 2008, and it's still not finished. I know that it's, it's working, and you weren't here, Mr. Gomez, whenever it started. But it's 2008, and here it is 2024, and it's still not finished. And so that, that's why I had voted no on that, because I wasn't sure these projects were going to get done, because we didn't have a CIP manager at the time. We had one, but he had other titles, other hats. CIP wasn't the top hat. So I, I just, I can see moving a couple of these up and moving one down, two down, but to, to move them all up and then to try and find close to $5 million, we're going to have to go out and bond whenever we're about to ask our citizens for Fire Station Number Four, for Animal Shelter. It's going to be on their backs as well, because the taxpayers are going to have to, to come up with that extra money. It's, it's going to raise y'all's taxes. So I'm trying to be fiscally responsible. I, I'm not saying that these roads don't need to be done, and by no means. I mean, they need to be done. There's a lot of roads here in Sybilla. I've been here since 1986, and I've seen these roads. And so I know these roads, and, and I've seen them deteriorate. But that's my two cents.
Okay. Thank you. And so just to clarify a few things, Mr. Reed, the bonding capacity that we do have available to us in the year 2025 equals about $10 million. And to, to, to exercise that bonding capacity, we would not have to raise the property tax rate upon our citizens in order to, to, to borrow that money to get these roads done. And then also, when we borrowed the money back in 2020, we did so with Sybilla Valley Drive as the, the main road to get fixed, and then we also had the list of nine other roads. And so we, we put that out there on the ballot, you know, for right. So we communicated to our citizens that those were the roads that we were going to get done with the money that we were borrowing. And so we have a compact with our citizens to follow through on our word as elected officials. And that's, that's a, a commitment that we made four years ago. And so, you know, to punt the, punt that further is, is disheartening, I think, to most citizens that, you know, that relied upon our word four years ago that we're going to do these roads. And so the Animal Shelter and the Fire, the, you know, Fire Station Number Four, those, like you said, would, would have a tax increase attached to them if the citizens so vote, you know, to pay for those, and to also agree to a, a slight tax increase to pay for this. But that's 100% up to the citizens, whether or not they want to vote for those two items. And so, but this particular $10 million, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Reed, is, would not require raising the taxes on our citizens, right?
So my response to that is, the roads that you're talking about tonight are on your five-year CIP. You're not adding any roads that you did not consider in this past budget cycle for FY '24. And you're right, we left 10 million on the table, out of our total 39, roughly $10 million on the table, out of your 39 million debt capacity. I also want to clarify that your tax rate, 46.99 cents, is split into an INS, that's debt, and an O and M, operations and maintenance. We're only talking about your debt rate. So your debt rate out of your total property taxes, what you programmed in your FY '24 budget, and for your five-year CIP, that, that INS tax rate generates, generates $39 million. You left 10 million on the table. These projects that you're discussing tonight, you just decided what year to put them in. What Anna Miranda and I informed council is that you can move those forward into FY '25 and not move the amount that you have left on the table. Also recognize that when we get updated property values in the coming months from the appraisal district, we'll find that property values overall still have gone up, and that debt model will show an increased capacity. So you're not adding any roads. You deliberated these roads during the last budget process. By accelerating these, you're not increasing the amount left on the table. You're merely moving what year you're going to fund them in. So I, I wanted to clarify that. I'll, I'll add also that in the many communities I've worked in, when you go out for a general obligation bonds, and you ask voters, and you say you're going to do a specific project, it is, it is the correct way to look at that as a bond with your voters. You said you're going to do something, better do it. And at some point, your residents will question whether or not you can do other projects if you don't get these done. That's my experience. I'm sharing that with you, because how you get these projects done can impact the way they look at other projects.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Reed. And so these are approved projects. They are to be done. It's just a matter of doing them beginning next year or kicking the can down the road in a, you know, to '26 or '27.
Having said that, though, if, if, if something came up that we needed CIP dollars for, and you've advanced these roads, and now we actually have, I don't know, a CCN obligation to put a sewer plant or sewer pipe underneath Sybilla Creek, that would not be in the CIP budget any longer, would it? That would be money that you would have to go out.
It would have to be approved project on the CIP list.
And I remind that it's, what we're talking about is wastewater CCN. It has not been transferred to us. We're still working through those final settlement agreements. Sometime this year, when those final settlement agreements are completed, then the process to go to the PUC, Public Utility Commission, to transfer the CCN will begin. That will take the PUC, I don't know how long. I'm not going to guess how long it takes them. I try to guess how long it'll take Texas to do FM 1103, and that doesn't work for me. But once the CCN is transferred to us, the question for council will be designing those projects first, and that'll take a year to design interceptor projects. And so during that time, staff has already identified grant sources, low-interest loan sources, that we will want to be eligible for, for wastewater projects. So there is time on the table regarding wastewater projects. We can't accelerate those projects, because one, we don't have the CCN. Two, it's going to take a year to design one or two of those projects. And so the earliest you would start construction would be FY '27?
But the bond capacity is the issue, right? Because you, you are meeting a joint meeting with the master plan committee, talking $51 million.
The wastewater projects, which we don't even have that level of bonding capacity. And now you're taking bonding capacity that we do have to push a couple of roads up, right? And I'm just saying, look, you can't have both, right? I mean, if you want to maintain some bonding capacity to have these wastewater projects that you were, you were mentioning in this meeting, right? Then at the same time, you can't then say, well, we've got this program, but let's hurry up and spend all this that we can and decrease our, our debt capacity. You have just said that we think that the county appraisals are going to come back favorable for us, but we don't know that, right? And so all I'm saying is, it seems a little bit more prudent, since these are mostly designed and ready to go, and quite honestly, we could make this decision in July when we knew what those valuations are. Makes a lot more fiscal sense to me than sitting here in March with unknowns and saying, yes, let's go ahead and push them forward. I didn't say no. I'm not saying no. I would love to get them all done. Every road in town, I'd like to get done, and I got a much longer list than these 10. But I think it doesn't make any sense until we know. Choosing tonight to say yes, or choosing in July to say yes, is not going to change anything with these roads. So I'm just not sure why we're choosing to do it now with unknown budgetary money, with a limited amount of debt capacity, when we don't know what any of those things are. And it seems to me, the prudent thing is, is to wait till what those things are, and then if it's looking good, we pull the trigger. And if it's not, we then maybe need to figure out another way to get this done. But I just don't understand what the rush is in March 26th to hamstring our debt capacity when we don't know what's happening with sales tax revenue, when we don't know what's happening with property taxes, and we'll know all those things in 90 days. So that's my only issue.
This is totally council policy, and nothing I said encourage you to make a decision tonight. I'm just reminding you where this money comes from. It's not sales tax. It's from part of your property tax. I was clarifying how you built your five-year CIP, and that these roads don't increase the amount of debt you plan already in your five-year CIP. So it is totally your decision. If you want to make a motion to look at this again in June or whatever, that's your decision tonight. If you want to make a motion to try to accelerate one or more of them, that's your decision tonight.
I want, I want the citizens to realize we're trying to be fiscally responsible with, with their, their, their monies. And if we make a decision tonight, it, it's not going to matter tonight, or if we wait until June to make that decision. I hope you all understand, because the road ain't going to get started tomorrow. We wait till June and have better figures as to what monies are coming in. It's not, because I'm, I'm one of those that, I was part of those 10 roads, and I know that we have to get those roads done. I, I, I'm the biggest advocate of, we, we made that decision to do those 10 roads. As a council, we've got to get them done. I understand that. I just want to make sure that, that the citizens know we're not kicking the can down the road, as everybody keeps saying. We just need to wait until we have a better view of the funds that we've got coming.
So what about the design, as far as getting the design done on these roads, if it were, if it were to have been approved tonight?
So we're, I mean, we're still pushing through with the design. We already have the money to do that, so we're, we're moving forward with that. So we'll have the design complete. The only thing that I will say, if we do push streets out further years, like '26, '27, like Millen overlay projects, you wait two years, you don't know what that road's going to do. And so we might have to get those streets reevaluated at that time, and it might increase the cost. We don't know. It would just depend on what the street condition is at that time. So while we do wait, streets do deteriorate, so we still have to keep that in mind while we're doing design. You, you can't just have a design sitting for two years and then expect it to be exactly the same as it was two years ago.
So costs only go up if we wait till '26, '27, instead of doing these in '25?
Construction always goes up every year.
No, I understand that portion of it, Mr. Gomez, but if we make a decision tonight, it's not going to change anything if we make it tonight or if we make it in June.
No, it won't.
Okay. That's, that's, make sure that's all clear.
That's correct. Yes. Yeah. But we're still moving with, forward with the design on these projects.
We got to get them done. Absolutely.
Yes.
Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion. We table this item until the second meeting. Will June be good enough? Will we have?
Yes.
Last year, they were late. June's good enough? Remember the tax appraisal numbers came in way, way, way late?
Yeah, it came in at the end of April. Again, I can't guarantee when they'll deliver.
First meeting in July?
No, let's say the last meeting in June. You have a budget workshop in June. We expect to have some preliminary numbers for you in, in that budget workshop, so.
I'll second that motion then.
Move to the second meeting in June. I don't have a date. Sorry, Peggy.
I have a question.
Katie.
If we table this until June, is there any way to, and I know they kind of talked about the design, but is there anything that we can do in the meantime to prepare at least Firebird Run, get it as ready as we possibly can?
So we're still moving forward with the design for all the roads, so we're, we're still working on that.
How long does design usually take?
So we were hoping to have all the design done by April. That's the commitment that our design person has given us, so our engineer. So by April, we should have the design ready for all these projects.
Okay.
And remember, the reason why June works is all staff was asking for councils, do you want to accelerate it, these projects in FY '26 and FY '27 to FY '25? So the wait until June so we can provide you more numbers, it does work, right? So you wouldn't delay construction.
They won't delay construction.
Correct, right? And so June would be soon enough, if you made a decision in June, albeit the budget's not approved until later, right, in September. If you authorize me to proceed with that design package to put it into a bid package, and we go out for those projects, right? We're not committed. When contractors submit their bids, you still have to award the project in October. That's exactly right. So you may in June, if you're of one opinion, to accelerate one or more roads. We can, and you direct me to initiate the bidding, we can time that up. So in October, we're in, we're in, well, if you want a special meeting, sir, we'll do October 1st.
Could I also, real quick, just on this, I know there's a motion on the table, and probably Mr. Hyde would be having my hide right now, but could we also discuss in the CIP meeting, subcommittee meeting, and narrow down exactly which ones? Because I think it has changed over time what needs to be done. I think there's some roads on that list that are this year that I'm like, I'm still not convinced need to be done this year, but there are some that are not on the list this year that definitely need to be. So if we could just play with it a little bit between now and June, so we can come up with what we really want to do.
And, and Mr. Reed, this is it. These are the last nine roads, right?
These are the roads from the nine roads.
So we get through these, and then we can work on other roads.
No, no, I mean, of this list of nine, right? I mean, because we're not moving everything up into next fiscal year. There's still going to be some roads that are hanging.
We, we could.
Move Deer Creek back to 2026 and move Firebird Run up to 25.
By separate communication, I'll communicate with the CIP Subcommittee about how we can look at these roads at the next meeting.
Okay, so there, there's a motion on the table. Who, we have, two people have not voted yet. I see Katie's having trouble with her system, and then
It's leaking it.
Councilman Mahoney voted no.
And that's the second regular meeting in June is what you asked.
Five yays. Okay. Moving on to 8B, discussion action on the final plat of Sybilla Creek Center. Ms. Huerta.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have received a request for a 30-day extension on this plat. Oh, no. We have, we have received a request for a 30-day extension on this plat for Sybilla Creek Center.
All right. So do I hear a motion to table?
I'll make a motion to table.
So vote electronically, please.
My screen's reloading.
Okay, seven zero. All right, moving on. C has been pulled from the agenda.
I believe the correct motion would be motion to postpone.
Oh, sorry. Can I amend my motion, or is it just too late?
To table it?
No, he said we need to postpone.
You can withdraw your motion and make the motion to postpone.
I withdraw my motion and make a new motion to postpone.
I did. I'm not. No, I'm kidding. I'll withdraw. Before we postpone this, can, I have a small bit of discussion, since it's still on the table. On the, we're on 8B.
Okay.
This would also still need a new second, just to be clear.
So, we're not going to be able to do it out here.
It's going to be on paper.
So, this is going to have a motion to postpone B, 8B?
Right.
I will second that, if that's correct, Ruth.
Yes.
Yes.
Sweet.
Okay, but discussion before we vote?
Yeah, we're, we're not going to have a discussion on that one, because it's, it's tabled, or postponed, so we can't.
But we can have, we can have, I just have a question. On the entrance off of 1103, is it going to be a right-in and right-out only? Because that's at the curve, and there is no center, it's going to be an accident waiting to happen. I just want to project that to the planning and engineering department, so I don't know where it's going to be, but if y'all can push the right-in, right-out.
Mr. Reed?
Mr. Hicks, Mayor and Council. Mr. Hicks, I believe you're asking about the access onto FM 1103. Text dot approves that by a right-of-way permit. We do not, we can get back to council as to what they approved, but that's not our decision at all. Would you like us to send that to you by email after this meeting, what they approved? Okay.
Okay. So, 8C was pulled from the agenda?
We have to vote.
Okay. Okay, I thought we already had voted on that.
No, verbally.
All right. Okay. Okay, go back and vote on this.
We have to do a roll call.
All right. Starting with T.G. Benson.
Aye.
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 Aye Savitt, 7-0. Onto 8D, discussion action on strengthening compliance of, with Backflow Testing Prevention Program. Mr. Parsons.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Thank you for letting me present tonight. So, tonight, we want to talk about the strengthening compliance with our Backflow Testing Program. So, we're going to go through this slide, and this is my first time using this new technology, so, okay. Thank you for your patience. All right, so, we're going to present an overview. Our overview, we're going to have four parts in our overview. Council's previous feedback and direction. Second part will be state law, Sibilo program. Part three, options to strengthen compliance. And part four, public education, implementation, and council feedback and direction. All right, previously, you've given us some feedback, and we are looking for, we were looking for direction and feedback on these three items. Do we want to proceed with the strengthening of the Backflow Program with the options we are presenting? How often should the devices be tested? And how you would like us to inform our water customers of these changes? All right, council's previous feedback and direction. All right, in January 9, on January 9, 2024, we talked to the council, and the council asked how the city can obtain compliance to protect the public water supply, and was interested in how to gain compliance if a customer does not have their backflow device tested on time. Secondly, the council wanted to know how many homes currently have backflow devices with pools, irrigation systems in Sibilo. And third, the council expressed interest in exploring the city providing testing services and inspections as part of being a utility customer. State law and Sibilo program. Here you'll, here you will see the TCEQ requirements for backflow testing, which explains that all backflow devices need to be tested upon installation, and every year, if a, if a health hazard exists. TCEQ does not provide a clear, concise answer of what health hazard is to necess, to necess, to necessitate annual testing. This level, this leaves us, this leaves this rule to being interpreted in the future once an incident may occur. Current Sibilo ordinance, our current ordinance mandates that all backflow devices be tested upon installation, repair, or relocation. And more often, it is required by the, and, and more often to be tested if it is determined by our billing official. It also states that residential devices need to be tested upon installation, repair, or relocation, and every three years, if a residential meter has a chemical feed port, pump, or irrigation enters into the floodplain, they will need to be tested yearly. Here, you can see a couple pictures of devices that are used. Double-check in a backflow, backflow prevent, preventer. Part three, options to strengthen compliance. Where are we now? We have 5,799 backflow devices in total on our water, in our water district. About 61% of our 5,318 customers with residential backflow devices are complying. All residential backflow devices are due to irrigation and/or pool.
Say that again, I'm sorry. I was looking at something about, how many percent comply?
61.
And then after that, the next sentence you said was, they have irrigation systems?
Yeah, that's for, so, those backflow devices are installed due to irrigation systems and/or pools. And then 42% of our 481 commercial customers with backflow, backflow devices are compliant. Here is a map of our water CCN. And here's what we are hoping to achieve. We want to achieve 100% compliance with, of our residential and commercial backflow devices, so we can better protect our water system from outside contaminants. We have come up with four options to achieve our goals. And to go over those quickly, or a brief overview of those, is a city provides multiple notices of the needs for a backflow inspection, imposes fines for noncompliance, and turns the water up to gain compliance. Option two, city provides multiple notices of the need for backflow inspections, imposes fines for noncompliance, and utilizes staff performs inspections where customers fail to comply. Sorry. Option three, city implements a backflow inspection program for all utility customers. Utility staff will perform mandatory backflow inspections, and city charges a monthly fee to cover the program. And then option four, the city would implement a backflow inspection program covering all customers conducted by a third party, and change, and charge fees for the program. Okay, and now, we're going to go in the depth of the different options. So, option one, a customer will be notified that their backflow is due. They'll get that notice every 90 days, and then as it gets closer, 60 days, 30 days, prior to that due date. The fourth letter would be sent explaining that they are being fined, and they have another 30 days to comply with getting their device inspected. Further failure to comply will result in a hand-delivered letter explaining a second fine, and a water service will be terminated until compliant. And then, once the backflow device has passed inspection, and all the fines have been paid, their water will be restored. So, here are the pros and cons for option one. The pro would be, we have a better customer compliance due to reinforced fines and water being turned off. We would be able to keep our water safer with better testing practices. This would have minimal impact to public works, utility staff, to turn off and turn off water. We would be able to offset the cost of staff needs with the fines. And then, the cons would be, we would see an increase in customer complaints from fines and waters, and water being shut off. Finding customers for noncompliance would cause a significant increase in work for the utility billing staff. And continued monitoring of the VPO data would also have time, a component that would need to be understood. VPO is the software that we use when a backflow device is tested. Those backflow device testers put that information into that software, and then we are able to see it on the other side. That's where we were able to see that scale of compliance and noncompliance. Option two, fines for noncompliance, and the city staff would test the device. So, a customer would be notified in the same way they would get a 90, 60, and 30 days prior to the due date. Failure to comply would result in a fine. The utility department would then schedule a time to test the backflow device, and the customer would be charged for the test. If the device fails, the customer would have to have it repaired, and then we would re-inspect the device. Failure to pay for these tests, passes inspections, would result in the water being turned off until these criteria are met. Pros and cons. So, your pros for option two would be, we would have a better customer compliance due to reinforced fines and the water being shut off. We would be able to keep our water safer with better testing practices, and we could offset the costs of staff with the fines. The cons would be, we would see an increase in customer complaints for the fines and increased charges for testing. Finding customers for noncompliance would cause an increase in the work for our utility billing staff, and this would increase our need for an additional utility team member and equipment. Option three, the city does the inspection in-house. A customer will be notified that their backflow device is due for an inspection. They will then set up the test with our in-house backflow inspector. The customer would be charged a nominal monthly fee to cover the expense. And the thought there was, is if we were able to get every backflow device owner a monthly fee, a minimal monthly fee, then that, as they need their backflow tested, they would have already paid for that, and then we would, we would do those inspections. Pros and cons. So, the pros for option three is, we would reach our backflow compliance goal. We would keep our water safer with better testing practices. Backflow water customers would not have to arrange their backflow, would not have to arrange their backflow device to be tested. Backflow water customers would not have to be concerned with the fines, and it would likely cost less than hiring a third party. We are estimating $3.75 to $5 residential, dollars per residential, I'm sorry, a month for residential charges, and $8.35 to $12 commercially. The cons would be, this would increase the workload on the current utility billing staff to get the new charges set up. That would be the initial setup part, portion of it. After that, then, it would just be a monthly charge. We would have to hire and maintain two new employees and obtain, and maintain the equipment that they would need for that. Backflow water customers would have an increased monthly charge. Option four, the city would contract a third party to comply backflow inspections. We would hire a third party, a qualified third party to all the backflow testing in the city. A customer would be notified if their backflow devices is due for an inspection and set up the test with the contractor. Additional tests would have to be billed out separately. The customer would be charged the cost of the test by the city. The total cost would include a 10% administrative fee to cover the city staff time and resources. The pros and cons for option four. The pros would be, we would reach our compliance goals. We would be able to keep our water safe with better testing practices. Backflow water customers would not have to arrange independent backflow device testing. Backflow water customers would not have to be concerned with fines. The city would not have to hire or maintain new employees and equipment. The cons would be, charging customers for noncompliance would cause an increase in work for our utility billing staff. This would increase the workload on the current utility billing staff to get new charges set up, and then additional tests if they're needed. We may get some customer complaints about increased monthly water bills, and we are estimating about $6.25 to $8.35 for residential monthly charges, and 16, 68 to $25 for commercial Public education implementation, council feedback and direction. All right.
All right, so, I'm going to give each council member opportunity. Okay, we still have more slides?
Yes, thank you. So, timeline to implement option one, it's going to take about three months to implement. We would have to rewrite ordinance, educate the public, and then set the fees. Option two is about six months. We would need to add new functions, require, require a new FTE covered by charges and fees. Option three would be the most, would be about six months to start implementing. And to the end of December, we would, we would do that with the, the budgeting cycle, and we would want to set that up during that time. We would have to develop the process, education, educate the public. Option four, we would develop the RFQ contact for several providers, rewrite our rules, and educate our public. That would also take about six months to implement. Option two, three, and four will require the city to adopt new fees. This would be done as part of the fiscal year '25 budget. Council's direction and feedback. Does council want to proceed with strengthening the compliance with the requirements for water utility customers to test their backflow devices to protect the public water supply, and increase compliance with state regulations? And then, we're also looking for, what frequency of backflow inspections does council require? Currently, the, the city requires three years for state regulatory for residents. How does the council want to inform our customers before implementing changes to the program based on the option council chooses?
Okay, so, what I'll do is, I'll give each council member an opportunity to ask questions of you and the rest of city staff, and then to state their preference. And we'll start with Councilman Hicks.
If I may, just to clarify real quick. To the extent that some of the slides said fees, and some said fines, when the city institutes a fine, that would implicate some sort of, implicate due process concerns, whereas a rate increase would not have the same issues with people challenging.
As far as fines? So, you're dissuading us from using the terminology fines, and more so use it as fees, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And Mayor and Council, to add to the comment there, so, when, based upon your direction tonight, when, if you pick a direction for us to go, if what was referred to as a fine is part of that direction, we'll work with the city attorney's office to determine if a fee increase for that situation would be more appropriate. And that's what our city attorney's office is recommending. So, just wanted to bring that up now, so that as you deliberate, when we come back, should a fine, as presented tonight, be part of that direction, you may see something come back that's more of a fee increase.
Okay.
Mr. Reed, whenever we do that, we have to publicize that, correct? If we're going to start implementing a fine?
By, by ordinance, a fine or a fee, you have to adopt by ordinance before you can impose them. So, anything we bring back that involves a fine or a fee, we always bring in ordinance.
Publish, right, okay.
Councilman Hicks?
Thought the last time we were here, it, it was brought up that currently, the state does not have regulations on us having to have the backflow test?
It, it does.
It does? Okay.
Which preference? Do you have a preference?
I don't, I don't have any of these facility, I don't have the use of these, to be honest. I guess my question is, if we go with the contractor, are they going to have a set fee? Because like, right now, I mean, if somebody calls up, they, Mayor has to call up because he's got a pool in his backyard, and they have to do that. He has to find somebody that's willing to come out, and they've been charging upwards of $300. If we go with the contract, are they gonna, are we gonna negotiate with them to have flat fee to where he could get one that says $300, and then Colonel Hetzel has to call for his water irrigation, we'll do it for $15? So, I just want to make sure that whoever we do choose, if we go with the contractor compliance, we're going to have set fees, that they can't just be overcharging.
Okay.
Yes, I would imagine we would go out for, we would go out for bid, and we would allow individual companies to, to bid to find out the lowest, best price with the best qualifications before we would, we would contract with them to do, to do that.
Okay, so, you like option four? Okay, all right. Councilman Hetzel?
One quick question here. What's the failure rate for the 41% and the 60-some-odd percent? 61%?
I'm sorry?
Failure rate. In other words, the, the folks... In other words, the, the folks that are doing it right now, how many of them are failing it?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer to that. I knew, I do know that different devices are, would fail at different rates based on manufacturer and stuff like that. And so I don't quite know. It's something I could look into and get back to you.
Councilwoman Sanchez Stevens.
I have a question regarding options three and four where it says covering all customers. Is that all customers, even those who don't have pools or irrigation systems? Will they incur a fee just as well?
And that would be up to the council. If you guys would want to put it on all water customers, then that's something that you could do. But if, but if you would want to put that on just the backflow device holders, then you could also do that.
Okay. So I'll make it to you.
No, I forgot to get Councilman Hetzel's recommendation. I'm sorry, I jumped to you too quick. Okay, so we have number four. Okay, all right, I'm sorry.
Okay, I, as far as option one goes, I'm not a proponent on turning off people's water just because they didn't get their backflow test. Options three and four stating covering all customers, I think it's unreasonable to ask folks who don't have irrigation systems or pools to pull in fees they're not able to use the services for. It leaves me with option two. However, I, here it says, and utility staff performs inspection for a fee. I feel that this is going to require us to hire more staff and increase our utility staff. So therefore, it's going to increase our salaries, budget, and so forth. So I kind of created an option five.
Okay.
And just kind of pooling in different ideas from the others. I thought that maybe city provides multiple notices of need for backflow inspections, hires a third party for noncompliance, and imposes an administrative fee to cover staff time and resources. So this is where notices have been given, residents are noncompliant, then the city will go ahead and be compensated through administrative fees to cover the staff's time by hiring a third party and imposes the noncompliance. Honestly, it, it's so easy getting a backflow inspection. I was able to use a local company here, Ability Backflow. I just called them right up and they worked with our utilities department. They, all I had to do was give them my name and my account number and they dealt with all of that paperwork, submitted it to the city. And all I had to do was just, you know, they sent me an email with my invoice. It was just so easy. So I also don't anticipate to see, even if the city themselves has to submit for noncompliance to a third party, I don't see this overwhelming task because it seems like the third party would just give it back to the city and they could just pay it through billing. So I just felt that was more fair. And that way it recompensates city staff for their time, but it doesn't impose a fee to all residents.
Okay, after I give everybody a chance, I'll go back to you. Okay, thank you very much, Councilwoman Sanchez Stevens. Councilwoman Cunningham.
So I had a similar thought to the hybrid process. $6.25 a month doesn't sound like a lot, but that was at the low end of one of the fees, the monthly fees that would be added. That's $75 a year for people who don't have backflow testing. That's a lot. I don't have backflow. I don't necessarily, if we do it once every two years, that's $150 that I'm paying for something I don't even have at my house. I think it would also be really, yes, go ahead.
That, that rate was based upon just backflow device owners, not all residents?
I got it.
Okay.
Okay. So how often, where you're looking for a recommendation on how often we would require backflow testing, correct? And right now it's every two or three years?
So for residents, it's every three years and commercial, it's every year.
Okay. There, this was discussed at length, like multiple times at our ordinance subcommittee and we originally went in trying to get rid of backflow testing. And we did everything that we could because we thought, well, what's the point? We have a lot of complaints about people saying, why do I have to pay for this? And looking into it more, there is, there are state rules that we have to follow. We have to do it. Speaking with people in the landscaping business and in the water business, it's really important that backflow testing is conducted. So I'm glad that we're beefing up these regulations. I don't think charging a fee to backflow owners or people who need backflow testing is that bad. If the, we've got a range of prices up here. One said 95, one said 300, 200?
It's like 80 bucks.
80 bucks, okay. The fee would be more than what that is. So I don't know if it would be beneficial to anyone to pay that $6.25 plus to have the city do it for them. I do like the idea of having an administrative fee if the city does have to go out and do it, or the city does have to go out and get a third party to do it. So I would be on board with the hybrid option.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Cunningham. So we, so we pretty much, and you guys have wanted to change to the hybrid, right? But the, y'all, okay. So we've got four hybrids so far. Okay. Councilman Mahoney.
Well, I'm a simple man. I like number three best of all of these options. I have a question though, Mr. Parsons. Why is the commercial monthly charge in both three and four? The commercial is double or more than the residential?
Commercial devices are usually bigger and so they charge more for those testing, for the testing for those devices.
So if, if you're that person testing, I don't know if you're doing that, you're qualified, but let's, if you are and you visit my home to test one of these things and then you visit the place, the commercial business right across the street over here, does it take longer? Does it, because it's different? I, I'm just wondering, why is it going to be double the, the cost?
Sometimes those devices are in different places that you have to go to and get to. Residential, it's fairly simple. It's, it's right there, easy to get to. And, and that's some, sometimes the charges. The test does take a little bit longer. I, I couldn't tell you significantly. I don't have that license yet, but it's something that I could certainly look into for you if you'd like.
Well, meanwhile, I'm going to say I'm in favor of number three. It appears to me the only difference is that it's going to be done by city staff versus a contractor.
Yeah.
Those two.
So the thought process in there is, is we're hoping that with city staff that we'd be able to do it cheaper than a commercial, but until we would go out for a proposal, we wouldn't know.
Okay. So I, I remain a supporter of number three.
Thank you very much, Councilman Mahoney. Councilman Roberts.
And yes, commercial does take longer. Usually the backflows are caged. You have to get access to them and there, it is more of a lengthy process and more paperwork to do with those. That being said, I'm not sure why we, yeah, way bigger, near three, four, six inch. I'm not sure how we muddied the water here with commercial then because we were basically just for our residents here, being taken advantage of and things like that. And, and I feel if we go down number four, where we use a subcontractor, we're, we're going to open ourselves up to the same thing. There, you're going to get a fail when maybe it's not a fail and, because it is quite costly for a contractor to replace one. Obviously, i- if we're going to go down this road, I would definitely choose number three. I think the cost, we could probably bring that down. It does seem a little bit high, but that'll just have to be something that we, we do in our discussions. One of the hard things is, is for me, you're, in a roundabout way, you're punishing people that do have a pool or do have sprinklers because the same situation can happen to a normal house. You can have a kiddie pool out there with a garden hose in it, filling it. You break a line, you create a vacuum, it's going to suck right, suck everything right back in there. That house is not required to have a backflow. So when you look at things like that, it's, you're, you're kind of separating and putting people in different classes. But this would be the most fair and equitable thing, I think. Require less effort on your part to go out and enforce it. Y'all just test them. If it's bad, mark it, give them 30 days to repair it and we go on down the road. So I would vote for number three.
Number three, okay. Thank you very much, Councilman Roberts. T.G. Benson.
So I, I, Mr. Robertson and I did not talk before this meeting about this agenda item, but he led something in very well here for me. I would just like to start with, the reason for this is what? Safe water system, right?
To strengthen it.
So it's for everybody, right? It's not just for the person who has or doesn't have a backflow. It's to keep the water system safe. Are there other things in the water system that we, that everybody pays for that maybe not everybody gets to take advantage of? Maybe, maybe not. But the reality of it is, is the whole idea of the program is to keep the entire water system safe for everyone. So it's a water system issue, not a backflow device issue. Having said that, I will just use one word to remind you of chipper, right? I mean, we've done this before where, so I, I mean, I think one of the things I would like to look at is what is the actual cost of three if we looked at the entire water system, not just those who have a device? Because if the idea and the goal of this is to keep the system safe, then everybody should be paying to keep the system safe. We do maintenance on the pumps and everybody pays for those, right? We do maintenance on the lines because, and everybody pays for it because it's to keep the system safe. If we wanted to look at a, you know, one-time fee of, hey, you've got a backflow device, you have to pay this to, you probably did when you put it in, but, you know, I mean, I think there's ways around this, but in the, in to me, the end goal is, is the water system needs to be safe. And at 61% and 42% compliant, I mean, I've lived here 15 years. I don't know that I've never, I've never heard of a water system issue. Has there been one in the last 15 years?
As far as a backflow device?
Yeah.
Not, not to our knowledge.
Right, so knock on wood, right? But I mean, the, the other reality of it is, is that you could have, you could go out tomorrow as a backflow guy and check a backflow device and the next day it fails, right? So I mean, I think, I think this needs to be a system fix, not a, you have a sprinkler system, you have a pool, then you have to pay more because it's protecting the entire water system. Or, you know, I go back to where we started with this, go every three years and everybody finds their own and we keep these compliance rates and we keep marching down the road that hopefully nothing ever happens. Because I mean, that's where we're at right now. We're at almost no compliance. I mean, 60% and 40% is essentially no compliance for keeping a water system safe. And you don't know of any incident and I don't know of any incident. So, I don't know. I would like to see some numbers on what it would cost the entire system to be monitored and not just finding those people that have these because it's, I don't, how many customers are there you have? You got 5,700, 5,799 that have backflow? How many customers do we have?
We have 6,780.
So 1,200 customers that don't have some sort of sprinkler system or pool? All right. Hey, for the record, I'm bringing this up, I'm not a customer of Sybilla Water, so I'll abstain in all of it. But I'm just saying, I think if the idea is to keep the system safe, you have to keep the system safe, whatever that costs.
Thank you, T.G.
So I'm option three if I must vote.
Okay, so you're option three and I, and I think you brought up a really good point. I was thinking about the chipper earlier. I mean, not every single one of us throws a bunch of branches out there once a month to get, to get them chipped up, right? And so, but we're all paying the 50 cents even though I've used it twice since, since it came about and that was like four or five years ago, right? And so obviously I'm not throwing branches on, on my curb every month to take full advantage of that 50 cents that I'm, that I'm spending, right? And as far as the costs go, I know three years ago I had it done and it was about $50. I'm not going to name the company. And then within the past 12 months, I also had it done because it came up again and it was about $80. And I have a pool and a sprinkler system. And so $80, you know, divided by 36 months, I think, you know, we're looking at maybe two bucks a month. Like if we were to only charge the folks that, that have a, you know, a backflow device, right? I don't think anything more than $2 a month would be reasonable considering that if I could just pay the 80 bucks every three years and then that would be less cost than the $6 or whatever, you know, per month.
We, we did use conservative numbers, so, so if it was, so we're, we're expecting, hoping it to be less, but I wanted to make sure that we covered that so you had a good view of what was going on.
All right. So you wanted to see some more data in order to?
If I could make a motion to, to postpone this until, how, how long do you think you'll need to, I, I mean, I just was curious what it would actually cost if we just looked at the entire system rather than, than just the people who have one? Any idea how long that'd take you? I'm not trying to put you under a gun.
No, I mean, it would take.
We've gone, we've gone a lot of years with this like it is. So I think if we go another month, we should be all right, right?
So how accurate do you want those numbers to be? Do you want a rough estimate?
Yeah.
I mean, give me five minutes after here, we can figure that out.
Well, if you think you can be ready for the next meeting, I'm fine with the next meeting.
Yes.
Does anybody else want anything longer than that before I make a motion to postpone this?
Councilman Hetzel, did you have a question before we do the motion?
Well, not exactly a question, but when I asked a while ago, what's the failure rate? We didn't have an answer. I'm looking at this thing on the TCEQ requirements and basically said, backflow must be installed to protect against health hazards, must be tested and certified at least annually, but ta-da. When asked for clarification, if we determine that a black, backflow is to be installed due to a health hazard, which, since we haven't identified health hazards yet, then the device needs to be tested upon installation and annually. Not, you know, it, the whole thing gets changed over at that point, once we have determined that there is a problem. So far, we haven't determined that there's a problem. I'm not saying it's not a good idea, but there's not a problem identified to get the entire gang operating this way.
So I, I do want to remind that in the January 9th, we talked about this, the devices being tested and that, I went to a training with TWA and they were talking about the committee that they're having with TCEQ and they're looking at bolstering this rule and making it an annual regardless. And the reason for that is the, the issues that have come up are with usually the irrigation systems and pools. And so if you have a pool that's really nasty, murky and a hose is left in, different things could happen. There's a break, a back siphon would happen. If there's fertilizer and there's a puddle that could go through the sprinkler head if, if devices were left. So these are some of the things that TCEQ is, is looking at and why they're looking at bolstering this rule to, to annually anyways in the future.
Side question, are there, are there adjoining communities that have annual inspections?
Yes.
Shirts?
City of Garden Ridge, I know, has annual inspections.
I believe also Live Oak does too.
Okay, so you have two things to look at. Do we have a motion to table?
I make a motion to postpone. Is that right? Tell, what is today? Second meeting in April. Yes, that, that one, that very one, whatever date that is. Second regularly scheduled meeting in April.
Are we voting on this thing? Is it up here yet? Okay, we are 7-0 to table the, or to postpone the backflow testing. Yeah. So table.
Could I also say one last thing? I apologize. And so there, the, the problem with backflow devising and the failure rate, especially Mr. Hetzel, this is for you. The, the problem is, is that if you just have one and one back, back siphon, then you have some really big issues. I encourage you to look up what happened with Corpus Christi. They haven't had backflow device issues. They had one major one and it cost them millions and millions of dollars. And I would hate to less, not bolster this and then we have one person get hurt and injured or killed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parsons. Moving on to 8E, discussion on the strategic partnership grant applications received for fiscal year 24. Mr. Huggins.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So just a reminder, the city council established a strategic grant partnership program back in the FY '24 budget process. What we had historically seen was that the city council receives requests for some special funding for projects throughout the year and we decided it was best to have a process where we had people submit applications for grant requests, allow an application, talk about how they're going to use their funding and allow you as the council to review those applications and decide who you want to present that, that funding for and for what projects you, you support. And so you set aside $10,000 in, in the FY '24 budget. And so you set aside ten thousand dollars in, in the FY twenty-four budget for this program. Uh, we opened up the grant application process in mid-February. We, we, excuse me, mid-January, we closed it at the end of February. And we received four applications, uh, for this, these, this grant partnership program. The, the four applicants submitted applications and I included that in your packet. I provided a summary for each application in your packet as well. I'm not going to go into in-depth on, on what those were, but I will mention the four applicants were the Ms. Siblo pageant and, and they wanted a twenty-five hundred dollar donation. Uh, Comal County, County Senior Citizens Foundation wanted six thousand dollars. Uh, the Alumni Association of the Citizens, Siblo Citizens Police Academy requested ten thousand dollars. And then CASA of Central Texas, which is the, uh, corner pointed, uh, special advocates that you saw tonight, uh, talk about what they, what they do for the community, requested thirty-seven hundred and seventeen dollars in funding.
Chief Huggins, what was the fourth one, I'm sorry?
CASA of Central Texas.
CASA?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, CASA?
CASA, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, so, uh, these different, uh, organizations are all nonprofit organizations and they're requesting funding for different, different programs that they have. And so you have the opportunity to look at these, uh, applications and review them. I included a scoring metric, matrix at the end of your, uh, packet. If you felt the need to actually score those applications and, and come up with a determination how you wanted to provide this funding. But we're simply asking that you review these applications and come back to us, uh, in the future, the next month or so and decide who you want to provide funding to and, and how much.
So there were only four applicants, that's it?
Only four applicants, yes, sir.
Okay, all right. And you opened that up when, in January?
Mid-January, yes, sir.
Mid-January, okay, that's what I thought, all right.
Is there a reason for the short window? Cause I know the Guadalupe Child Advocacy, they didn't know about it until after the deadline. Um, so I think the window was probably a little short.
We discussed that at the, in the January meeting that we were going to open it up. So it's totally up to the city council to decide how long they want to leave that, that process open for.
Well, I've got, I've got a concern, I, I mean, I understand it's a nonprofit, but this is one that I would have the police department fund, but-
As far as the Citizens Police Academy one?
Ten thousand dollars for drones.
They submit the application, I'm not telling you who to, who to fund for.
Well, I understand, but th- this is my, my concern on that, um, Mr. Huggins is, we're going to give out ten thousand dollars and that's all our whole budget is ten thousand dollars.
That would be correct, that would take the whole thing, yes, sir.
Whenever, to me, that's something that the police department needs to be advocating for in budget season. But for us to give a grant, I, I'm more inclined to, to CASA and, and the Guadalupe advocacy. Those are the ones that I pictured applying for this, not our-
I, I totally get it.
No, no.
They're, they're five oh one C three and they submit the application. I'm just providing you the information, so.
Drones, I know that we already have drones.
Yes, sir.
But, and, and-
And, and we can totally get with the police department and say, this is something you need to request in your, in the budget process.
Yeah.
Okay.
I get that.
Councilwoman Cunningham?
I think the police academy is, Citizens Police Academy are following the lead of the shirts, Citizens Police Academy that did this. They applied for grants to get drones for the police department. And so we were one of the first grants that they heard about, so they applied to us. Um, they are a separate five oh one C three, they are not a part of the City of Siblo, even though they kind of are. Um, I get the hesitation for that one. Um, I get the desire to want more people to apply. We are limited to ten thousand dollars and with the requests from the four agencies, w- we can maybe pick two, possibly three. So, and give them what they want to be effective. So I think that four is good to start off with. I think next year we can, we'll go through the budget season, we'll approve an amount in the budget for these grants and we can start the application process earlier. This was our first time doing it, we just approved it last budget season. We had to work on the application, on the process, on the, like, this is our first time. So four applications is not, I, I would have loved to see more, but we also only have ten thousand dollars. So whittling down four projects into ten thousand dollars is a lot easier, yeah, than to try to whittle down ninety. So I think that this shows us, this is a really good first round for us to try to look at the scoring matrix. Does that matrix work with what we want? Is it reflective of what we want to be doing in the community? Are we targeting the right applicants? We, we can have those discussions with these four and I think this is actually a really good start on this process. It also helps advocate for more money or for less money or whatever during the budget season for these strategic partnerships. But we did, we actually did extend the deadline, like, at least once, if not twice.
Well, we were only going to do a thirty day, uh, application period to start with, but we actually extended it to forty-five days to give people more time. So again, it's totally up to you if you want to do it for two months next year, uh, we can totally do that, that's up to you.
Because I would have liked to have seen the, the Guadalupe advocacy, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, you know, there's, there's a lot of them out there that, um-
This, this is an off-season grant, so most grants follow the fiscal year, they usually are due like November first.
Right.
And, or, or like May, so to help go along with the fiscal year. So ours was in February, which is kind of an odd time for an application to be due. It's not really on their radar to even be looking for that. So I think we can reach out while we're doing the budget season this year, reach out to these nonprofits who didn't apply and ask them, when do you typically see your grant applications? What's a good time of year for us to have this? Because they also have to incorporate it into their budget process for that next fiscal year.
Yeah, but they're gonna, they're, they're hoping to get the funds. I mean, how many times is-
Right.
Chief has put in for grants that we get turned down all the time.
Right, but if they're going to use it, like, uh, one of the proposals is for an employee. They're going to pay it towards a, a social work type employee. So if you're looking at how much time you have left in your fiscal year and when you're thinking you're going to be approved and when can you hire that person and get them onboarded and how am I going to cover, cover that salary the next fiscal year? It, you need to kind of know that stuff and it's helpful for nonprofits when the, when the grant application and the timeline for getting paid and things like that are, are more set. So I don't think February is ideal, just with the holidays and everything, but that was what we had, so that's what we're rolling with and I think next year we'll do a lot better with that.
At the budget process this year, we can determine when we want to open up the application process, how long we want to keep it open for and so on and so forth.
Yeah, and so with this agenda item, you know, the intent wasn't for us to pick who the winners are, you know, right up here on the dimes today. This is, this is just for us to, to hear who, who applied and how much they're asking for and for us to score them up independently of this meeting and then we'll come back on a future council meeting and, and ma- make the award.
Yes, sir, so you let me know when you want to come back and, and make that determination, we'll get it on the agenda.
All right.
I'd say at least a month to go.
Yeah, let's give us a month then, okay?
Okay, fair enough.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Huggins, I appreciate your time and putting this together and-
Yes, sir.
Going through and, and facilitating this process, thank you, sir.
I'd like to one too.
Okay, and we're going to move on to the next one, which is-
Mr. Huggins.
Eight F, discussion presentation of proposed public safety facility design. Brian Huggins.
Yes, sir, so, uh, in the FY twenty-three budget, you approved funding for, uh, a, a proposed public safety facility design. And so, uh, last year, uh, council approved a contract with Icon Architects who have a history of designing fire stations. Uh, we went through the RFQ process, uh, chose this architectural firm. Uh, they come and presented to y'all, uh, about their qualifications and, and we, we signed the contract for them to start the process of designing a facility for us. So, uh, what we're going to do tonight is just recap the direction that we received from council in the May twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three council meeting. Uh, elements of the facility requested by the fire and police departments and then the current design of the facility as provided by the consultants. So the questions we're going to ask this evening, does council believe the proposed design meets the needs of the city? Uh, does council have suggestions for elements not incorporated in the proposed design? And is council in support of moving forward this proposed design or a design with any suggested changes? So again, uh, council approved this funding previously, um, at the May ninth council meeting. You authorized the RFQ for design, uh, of the facility. And at the August twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three council meeting, you approved the contract with Icon. So we've been working with, uh, Icon Architects to go through, uh, what, what we want in that facility and they've been working with us to try to design what we're looking for. So Chief Troncoso, myself and Julio Gomez have been meeting with Icon on a, a regular basis to determine, uh, kind of what, what we want to see in the facility and can we incorporate that in the square footage that we have available to us. So, uh, last year when we presented the, uh, good, better and best options of what a public safety facility should look like and what we were looking for, council directed us to go with the better option on the building and the best option for the burn building. And so these are the, the things, the elements we were looking for in the design of the building itself. Um, and so when we started talking to Icon about what the design should look like, they incorporated these features into the new design. And so this is the proposed floor plan that, uh, Icon has come up with at this point with our suggestions. We've made some tweaks to it along the way. Uh, we have four apparatus bays. Uh, we have a, a twelve bunk, uh, fire facility, uh, to house twelve firefighters. Uh, we have a, a substation, police substation element with a, uh, police squad room that, uh, can hold three officers. Two, um, individual offices, uh, for the police department side and a, a small conference room that anybody could use either the fire or the police departments. We also incorporated a, uh, community room slash training room slash EOC. Uh, that, well, we designed it so that if the community want to use that as a community room, they would have access to that part of the building without getting into the, um, authorized areas within the building, right? So, uh, the police substation side would be locked off. The, the fire department living quarters and everything would be locked off, but the community could still use that community room. And, uh, it's designed to hold about thirty people. So it's a decent sized, uh, community room, it's a decent sized training room, it'd be great for an EOC. Um, and there's parking, we, we, we put in parking out the front to accommodate thirty people. Mr. Huggins, you have a question, sir?
Would that be about the size of our annex or bigger than the one we have?
Probably, probably closer to the size of Fire Station Two, right? Both bigger than both Fire Station Two, training room and community center, so. And, and it's designed, uh, if you look at the little hash mark in the middle of that room, it's designed that we could actually partition it off if we wanted to have two different rooms that use at the same time for different functions. So we tried to incorporate as much as we could into, uh, this floor plan, the, the square footage we had to accommodate the needs of the fire department, the police department and the community as well. So, uh, are, are there any questions about kind of what we've come up with so far?
Okay, well-
We talked about being able to flex this out and make sure it's necessary, is that, is that dual performance designing?
Yes, sir, I think we could go off the back of it if we had to, uh, kind of, but I'm sorry.
Have we specifically planned that in?
Yes, we, we discussed with them that we need to have the ability to-
Councilman Roberts, any questions? Any questions? Mahoney? Nothing. Sanchez Stevens? Hessel? Joel? Okay, what about the, what about the firing range? Did we have the gun range talk on there?
Well, I'd love to have a gun range out there, but I don't know that we have the room for it.
What's that?
I don't know that we have the room for it.
No room?
So if you look at this, this part of the, uh, the plan, the, the building going to be up here, uh, the fire, uh, training, uh, facility would go right here where it says draft print. And then this area out here is, uh, going to be for detention, water detention. For y'all that are familiar with the, the land out there, it's really flat. And so they're going to have to build in some detention for the water to compensate for all the concrete we have out there on the property.
Okay.
I'm sorry? There you go. We could do swift water rescue training out there at certain times of the year, you know? Uh, so just some quick, uh, elevations, this is what we designed it to look like, uh, Fire Station Three or similar to Fire Station V with the coloring and the, uh, the, uh, materials that were used on the facility. So it's really a nice looking facility, so, um, uh, any of these questions that, do you, you know, do you believe the proposed design meets the needs of the city?
Do we have a cost yet?
No, sir, uh, Icon is going to come and to, uh, present to y'all next month, at the end of the next month and they can probably give us some probable costs at that point.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You bet.
All right, moving on to, thank you very much. Moving on to eight G, discussion on the traffic signal timing at Siblo Valley Drive and Borgfield Road. Councilman Benson?
That was two meetings.
I think he's coming back, yeah, but we'll wait till Mr. Rodriguez is back here. Yeah, we're on, uh, eight G about, um, the traffic signal, CBD in Borgfield.
Mayor and Council Chris Otto is here tonight and he is qualified and prepared to answer questions about, uh, the traffic impact analysis study that is for the Buffalo Heights Shopping Center as well as, uh, any questions that you may have about the traffic signal and its relationship to the expansion of commercial activities.
Thank you.
I'll stand up here too, just in case it's a question for Wayne.
So is the, it appears to the casual observer and not the civil engineer that we clearly have some issues of traffic not flowing well at that intersection since probably, well, I've got some other issues with that light that we could talk about offline that, for example, at five-thirty in the morning, it's still running through its entire cycle. So you can sit at this light for, it's actually quite long too, a minute, minute and a half waiting for a light when nobody else is on the road. Separate from that, but needs to be addressed, is that we now have Chick-fil-A, we have, I, I'm not going to name the businesses. I should have named Chick-fil-A, but we have enough businesses in there now that between, at that intersection, we have, when I came down here today, as a matter of fact, I, I came down going westbound on Borgfeld to turn left onto Siblo Valley Drive and go south. The line of traffic coming eastbound on Borgfeld was significant. The turn lane coming northbound on Siblo Valley Drive was past the end, that first entrance into Walmart. Both lanes of traffic on the middle lanes, this is six o'clock, right? Both lanes going northbound on Siblo Valley Drive are beyond Zaxby's entrance. And I get it, there's traffic, but we've got, there's got to be some solution to this because it's just, it just seems like there's a lot of people waiting around and then, and then my light, thank heavens, right, going east, I had all day. And I'm coming from basically bentwood and drove the entire stretch and made the left-hand turn and got it. And I'm like, okay, so I, I mean, I get there's going to be the onesies, twosies like me taking advantage of that really long light and I know it's there because I travel, so when I, when I'm thinking of ways to dodge town, this is what I do, but that's, it's, it's egregious, honestly, it's-
So since this first popped up on the council agenda probably six weeks ago, um, I've made it a point every time I come through Siblo to go through that intersection and see how things are operating. Um, the signal itself during peak hours appears to be functioning properly. Um, what I've noticed is the driveways, um, some of those driveways are supposed to be right in, right out only. They're actually signed as right in, right out only, but they don't have physical barriers to force people right out, right in. And so I have reached out to, um, one of the developers that maybe sells chicken and told them they need to put a physical barrier in there, either a pork chop or something to force people to turn right out and not allow a left turn in. Um, so their engineer is working on something, um, that they're supposed to present to me to, to make that correction. On the other side of the road, um, their plans did not call for right in, right out only, um, on the, I guess, the north side, the Walmart side. That's something I think we need to look at. So I don't think it's the signal itself that's the problem, I think it's the driveways. And then also I noticed that the, the left turn bay, if you're going towards thirty-five on Siblo Valley Drive, the storage of that left turn lane is short. Um, when I went through there, there were five cars outside of that storage. That's something we can look at extending, but that's going to require more right in, right out only.
Well, not only that, if you go further down northbound Siblo Valley Drive, that lane, you're now in-
Who, unless you're going to no longer allow people to turn left into Walmart there, because that, that will be a solid wall of cars. I, I've seen that solid, that suicide lane solid all the way down to the second entry, the south, the most, not, I guess, the most southern, but the middle entrance of Walmart on Siblo Valley Drive. Yeah, in front of Taco, I mean, it's, it's way down there, all left turn and, and then again, I mean, I, I would ask you to look at the timing, especially coming westbound on Borgfeld. I mean, I know that there are people using that road- I mean, I know that there are people using that road, but you have an inordinate amount of time. And I don't know that it was, will help because then you've got the eastbound traffic that is obviously taking a lot of that, but most of that eastbound traffic is not coming straight through that intersection, they're all turning right onto Sybalo Valley Drive. So, I don't know if there's a way to make that, again, not a civil engineer, not trying to play one on TV, I'm just saying, something's not right. And maybe it's the right-in, right-outs, but something is amiss in that intersection.
And so, we have provided a proposal to Wayne to do a, an analysis of the entire area, the signal and the driveways. I can tell you, the signal is set up per the design timing, I can't guarantee the design timing is the best timing. It's a balancing act when you're talking four legs of an intersection with left turns, you've got to balance them. And there may be some improvements that can be done, but we'd have to do a study to figure out what that looks like.
Yeah, I did notice today, again, I'm not trying to get too in the weeds on this, but also the right turn lane on, off of Borgfeld, on, going southbound Sybalo Valley Drive, if we could make that like a more right turns available, and I mean, there's got to be ways to do that because that's where 90% of those, that traffic's coming. You get the one car in a blue moon that comes straight through.
Everybody's back up to doggy.
Yeah, it's, it's, so anyway, that's, that's all, I'm glad we've looked at it a little bit because it's just, it's just, and then if we could maybe look at like off-peak cycle times, that light stays red, north and southbound Sybalo Valley Drive way longer than it needs to be when there's nobody going east-west on Borgfeld.
See, and off-peak, Sybalo Valley Drive should have the green error.
I drive it often to go down to 78 at 6 o'clock in the morning, and I will get stuck at that light at Sybalo Valley Drive without another soul on Borgfeld Road, and it's a long, long wait.
Okay.
Check those times.
Yes, Sybalo Valley Drive should be getting the green priority in off-hours.
You can get a car coming eastbound on Borgfeld at 5:45 in the morning at Firebird Run, and it'll trigger the light, and you're like, what? I mean, they're going to turn right, 99 out of 100 of them turn right, they can turn right on red, and you'll get the red light and you'll sit there for two minutes.
So, we may need to look at the detectors, maybe they're detecting too early.
I think we need to look at all.
Okay.
If we're, if we're going to look at that, if we're going to proceed with that, we'd probably need to go on further past Walmart, so where they're building the professional building, bitwood pass or whatever they're calling it right there, that's going to become a huge problem with Wiederstein Elementary because those folks won't be able to get in and out of that professional building because they line up for an hour and a half prior to school.
Right.
And to pick them up.
We have a similar problem like this somewhere else in town, don't we?
Up there, it's still high school. No, you're absolutely right, and that's something we're going to need to work with the school district or something, they're going to need to tell them, hey, park down every, past every day way and wait to come up because right now-
I've wondered how we've let this go so long with them out in the street. I mean, they'll, they'll loop down towards the church, towards the park.
They stay in the, on the corner, up against the curb.
Back up Gilroy Ranch Drive.
For an hour plus.
And we can work with the school district and see if there's a better solution. At Steel High School, we've been working with them, and they're going to be queuing more on Knights Crossing.
Knights Crossing.
Actually, not on Knights Crossing, but they're extending their driveway further down Knights Crossing to get the queuing on the high school property.
Amen.
Because I know that they fixed, they've finally fixed the light here at 11:03 in Maine, but Councilwoman Sanchez had called Tanya over at Techstat, and they've got it fixed because I pulled up to that the other morning.
It was lighting only for like one minute or less, maybe like 35 seconds.
No, it would only let one or two cars go through. Now, it lets more, but even to that point, his point, I was, I forget where I was going early morning to the VA, I think, and pulled up, no traffic, and it changed right away to let me go. So, I know that's his problem as well on that other one.
Okay. So, we get on this one?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mayor, with that conversation, we're going to refine the scope of what they proposed, and that's why I waited on this, was I didn't want him, I felt like we were going to do more work than we needed to, and that I did not feel comfortable spending that, that amount of money for the scope that you may not have really wanted us to work on, so we'll refine that scope, and Chris Otto and his team will look into this, we'll follow up once that's all done, we'll do a nice little presentation.
Yeah.
Thanks so much. All right, moving on to 8H discussion on amending the council's budget to add funds to travel training or meeting expense. Councilman Hicks.
Bringing this up again, I know that it's a sore subject with some, and that's fine, but I mean, I know that the mayor has volunteered us, the city, to host the judges' meeting with the mayors, the next go-around that we have.
You mean Guadalupe County?
Yes.
The mayor's meeting? Yeah.
So, I mean, we, we're, used to only have one or two people that go to the different meetings, and I don't, I don't ask for expenses for all my meetings, I mean, I go to a lot of meetings, and I don't ask for all the expenses for all those, I just, it's one of those where we've got people, and I'll talk about it here in two agendas from now, but there's, we need to look at expenses for those of us that are wanting to go or able to go, because it makes us better council people up here to make good decisions. I just asking for amendment, don't know how much it's going to be, but I just don't want us to go in there and then go in the hole because Ms. Simics is the one that controls this, so.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Hicks, and this isn't one that we're going to vote on, but I do want to give everybody an opportunity to speak. I know Katie wants to say something, but I'll make sure, I don't want to skip you, Dick Hetsel, if you have anything. I know you do, what is it, the ACOG, so you, you, yeah, so I know we all, we all kind of have our specialty, so you do the AMPO and then TML, and then you do ACOG, and Councilwoman Sanchez-Stevens, I know you have a few things you do.
Yes, it has been very beneficial, getting the training, especially as a newly-elected official, and just understanding municipalities, the state level, seeing how all that works, and also the meetings just as well, being in community, being able to go to the chamber luncheons, the NEP meetings, northeast side with Sister Cities, it's about building those relationships just as well, so it has been very, very beneficial. So, I take, I'm part of that added expense because I wanted to absorb and learn as much as possible and be out in community as much as possible just as well to represent our city and also just learn from other cities just as well. And I think through that, we're able to get ahold of, you know, our district representative office to see about advocating for safer grants and things like that, and without going to these meetings, having these persons easily accessible, it's really difficult to just strictly, you know, go by email. It's great to establish these relationships, as you know, you invited him over to the Chili Cook-Off, too, and so important, so I feel like that could not have happened without attending certain meetings and trainings.
Absolutely. Councilwoman Cunningham.
So, I, a few meetings ago, I brought a chart of the training fees, policies that other cities have, I looked at about 10 different cities and looked at how much they have per person, I looked at how much we have allotted per person on council for trainings, how much we have allotted per person for staff. It was approximately $1,800 per person for council members and only $1,300 per person for staff. Doing a quick survey of us up here, three of us haven't gone to any trainings this year. We had 15,000 budgeted, meaning 3,000 per person has been spent on training, approximately. I requested training information, I haven't gotten that yet, on how much has been spent over the years on each person's training, to see what that's at. But I remember a very lively discussion debate on the budget on why are we spending so much on training staff people? Why are we budgeting so much? We shouldn't budget money, we shouldn't pay taxpayer dollars to have them get trained to go and get another job. Their training, in my opinion, is just as important, if not more important, than our training. I don't attend trainings where we have to pay, I attend on average probably two, at least two webinars a month that I'm doing that are free, that relate to the city, that relate to business that we're doing. If I know something's coming up, I'll look up a training, there's recordings of trainings. Is it better to go in person? Sometimes. It's, a lot of these trainings, it's the same thing over and over again. You get credit for going to, I went to one training, and one of the credits you got was for listening to an awards announcement. Why am I getting a credit for that? Why am I paying for a credit to attend a training where we're just announcing award recipients? That doesn't feel to me like good tax dollar usage. I'm not arguing that training is bad, I'm not arguing that people should not be going to training. What I do think is that we are supposed to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars, and saying that we, as council, are more important than our staff being properly trained to do very specific things is a slippery slope. I also think increasing our budget for us when we're having to cut in a lot of other areas, we just talked about not rushing roads because we can't afford it, and granted, the amounts are, you're not asking for like $400,000 or a million dollars, the amounts are vastly different, but it's not a good look when we just told citizens, sorry, we probably won't be able to do this because we don't have money, and then we're turning around doing more money, putting more money toward training. There are lots and lots and lots and lots of training opportunities out there, certifications and everything that do not require funding that you can go to online or in person. I work, I have kids, I'm on several volunteer boards, I still manage to go to trainings even if they're not in person. So, there are things that we can do, and if we do have a budget, we have to live like every single other person in this country where we have to decide what's important. We know which trainings are coming out, maybe you don't get to go to all of them, maybe there's one that's outside the budget, but that's one you really want to go to, then you figure out how to make up the difference in that funding, pay for some of it yourself. I just don't think it's responsible, yeah, I mean, we all pay for, I think we all probably pay for stuff out of our own pocket. I haven't ever submitted for mileage in my three years on council, so I think we all are paying for stuff ourselves, but I think that's the responsible thing to do. You're fine. I, I just don't feel comfortable increasing our budget even more when right now we're averaging $3,000 per person who's actually attending training versus our 1,300 allotted per staff member.
Councilman Mahoney.
Well, I'll just echo most, most everything that Ms. Cunningham has already said, that there are, I want to say also, there are some things that I have attended that at the end of, the end of the day, I thought this really wasn't worth it, that it really didn't improve my skills or knowledge as a council member, and I feel like sometimes nobody likes to admit it, but there's sometimes we waste taxpayers' money. And I think we all need to look in the mirror and challenge ourselves to really, really answer that question, are we doing the right thing with taxpayer money? There are some things that I've been to that I thought were okay, there were some that were too expensive, there were some that were free, there are some, there's, there's one that I repeated after a year on council, I went to the, a second time, and I think that's enough, I'll skip, I might, I may not do that whenever again. I just think, I don't want us to feel like we have a green light to just keep on going to these things when it's not really, I don't see a benefit to the citizens that I can articulate. If my neighbors come and ask me, what did you learn by going to this? Why did you, the city spend 400, $800 or something? I want to be able to give them a good answer. I'll be ashamed if I don't have a good answer. That's all I'm going to say.
Yes, sir, thank you. Councilman Roberts.
I'd like to pretty much echo what Mr. Mahoney and Ms. Cunningham, it's just, you know, when you run for office, nobody pays you to do it, you have to expend your personal funds to go there, and it's a commitment that you do. It's, when we're sitting here having honest discussions about money and trying to figure out what roads we can be fiscally responsible and redo, it's, I say, it's just hard to say, well, I'd like money to go to Dallas. It's, I think that's just, that'd be a real hard conversation for me to have to have with somebody in my district, so I just, I think it should be a cost burned by the, by the representative.
Thank you, sir. T.J. Benson?
My only issue on this one is that I think, I mean, I remember getting your sheet, Katie, and we had a little text thing back and forth on the way home, I said, yeah, but I think, you know, it's a proportionality issue, right? I mean, I think, my concerns on the budget were that there were some departments that had really high training budgets, and there were other departments, like, you brought it out even more succinctly in yours when I did it, like, if you look at the fire department, they spend almost nothing, the police department spends almost nothing, and those are probably our two largest departments, and they spend almost none of the training budget, right? So, those are my issues in the budget session, is that who's training, why are we, why are four people in a department spending $20,000 to train, right? What is, what is that, right? Those are my questions, and it might be completely legitimate, I was just throwing it out there as, hey, is this a concern? I think if you're looking at seven, eight individuals on a council, that, there are training requirements, I suppose, and there are, there are meetings and things that we probably need to be at so that we can get things done. So, you know, I'm more interested in the individual one-to-one, pick them apart rather than saying, here's the entirety of the city divided by the number of people we have, and this is what everybody should spend, because I think that's, that miss, that misses the point a little bit, because there's large departments who are spending almost nothing in outside training and licenses and those kinds of things. There was smaller departments that were spending quite a lot of money, which was the point of my discussion of the budget, it will be my point in this discussion, this budget, because when we go look back at last year and say, well, what did we get for those training dollars and those licenses, there better be an answer, right? Just the same as you're asking for an answer, what we're getting for these dollars. And I think if we can come back with that, we have an entire section in our meeting that was designed several years ago, I'm, by the history, I understand that this, what meetings did you attend is to relay the information that you attend and learned at those meetings so that we would, so that everybody would partake of what was learned, right? That's sort of gone off the rails a little bit sometimes now, but, not that it's bad, I'm just saying, you know, I think that's where we really need to get back, to get this back to and say, okay, what was done in the training, what kind of information are you bringing back? And then, we can see the value of the dollars being spent versus, we're not really sure. But, you know, I think some of these meetings that people are going to for lunches, luncheons and things, I think this is a business of personal connections, and without them, it's tougher to do. I mean, it's much easier for me to go talk to some people at the school district because I've talked to them, right? I'm not sending an email from my T.Benson, I guess I can give it, Sybalo TX.gov account, right, like, who's this, he never around, he's never around, whatever, but because I've had those relationships and created those opportunities to meet, then, then we can call, I can call and say, hey, we're having a problem with some parking, can you help me, right? So, anyway, that's just my thought, rambling thoughts.
Are, when you're attending those meetings, are you submitting mileage?
I don't, for me, no, because I'm not going as frequently because I work. So, for me, it would be more painful for me to try to figure out how to submit the mileage.
Right. But that's, that's kind of my point, though, is you don't, you can go to meetings if you choose to go to meetings. I go to meetings all the time, I'm not submitting for mileage, I could do trainings all the time, I'm not submitting for that. So, increasing the budget to do those things is not necessary because you can do those things without increasing the budget.
Certain things, but I mean, if I, if I had meetings that needed to be attended, we had people last year went to Tech, to Austin to get a bill passed that we needed to get passed. That is a Herculean list, you know, on a budget to say, I'm going to go spend the whole day in Austin, I'm going to sit in traffic, I'm going to waste hundreds of gallons of gasoline waiting on I-35, you know, I mean, and just, I went to the school district, right? So, it's in my neighborhood, right? It's a little different thing, and so I think we have to, we have to look at what we're attending and why those are being attended, and I think for the most part, I have, I've not seen, and I don't see everything because we can't really see and hear what everybody else is doing per se, hopefully they're bringing it back to these meetings, but I haven't heard of anybody that's just egregiously got out there and done something, it's like, holy crap, what are we doing?
No.
So.
But we need to be consistent, and so for, for, we need to be consistent, that's why I brought that policy that needs to come back to council. I've not gotten any feedback on the policy from anyone, but we need to have a policy in place on how we're going to spend the money. Increasing the budget is not what you do. If I'm at home, I have a set budget, I have to decide what I'm going to purchase and what's a priority. I have to decide what's realistic. If I'm sharing that budget with other people, there needs to be, okay, these things are, these things aren't, and there needs to be a discussion about that. We've increased the budget for training by about $5,000 a year for the last three years.
Well, but I've got a rubber chicken dinner at the, I don't mean to compete in the, the, what's the tri-county or whatever, the, what's the name of the, what, chamber, the chamber luncheons, right? I mean, it's a rubber chicken dinner, right? I mean, but it's a pretty expensive rubber chicken dinner, but-
I mean, but it's a pretty expensive rubber chicken dinner, but those are meetings that I've not been to one in several years. I went years ago for a completely unrelated reason. But, I mean, it's not an inexpensive rubber chicken dinner, but the things that can get done at that are more valuable probably than the, the fact of the rubber chicken dinner. So I, I mean, I think, so I, to your point, you're right. I think maybe this year in the budget session, we need to say, take a serious look at a very tight budget and say, okay, if everybody attends the rubber chicken dinner once a month, we need to at least budget that in because that's an important meeting that we probably, if you can, should be there, right? Because it does put you face to face with other people, can help you with some of your problems and get some things going across. So maybe that's what we need to do is actually look at what a budget is. I think in the past, what's gone on is that we just sort of said, this is how much council has to spend on meetings and training and, and we don't really even have any basis in fact on what that is.
Yeah, no, I agree, Mr. Benson. I, I think when it comes to budget season, we should all, you know, bring what we estimate, you know, as, as dollars that will be spent, you know? And then we can all put it together. Instead of throwing that number out there, you know, whether it's 5,000 or 15,000 or whatever, if we could all come to our budget workshops in a couple of months and say, hey, you know, I, I plan to spend, you know, whatever amount, you know, within the next 12 months and then we can all know what that is.
Which is kind of what I asked for from city staff. If you'll recall in the budget session was, okay, you've got $26,000 for training, where are you going?
Right.
Right? So, I mean, I think that's, I, I don't treat those as any different in my mind. It's, okay, if this is what our budget's gonna be, what are we doing with it? And if we say it's a $22 rubber chicken dinner, month to month, for everybody on council, then that's what we need to budget for, or whatever that is. But then it, the budget has to mean some, then it can mean something.
Yeah.
Right now, it's just a dollar figure we pull out of the hat.
Yep.
We throw it on the budget and then we're, not even halfway through the year and we're out of training money because now, in past years, that number's been fine because one or two people partake of it and now we've got four people going a lot.
Right.
Now that money, now it doesn't, there was no basis in fact for it and now, now we're stuck.
Yeah, because in previous years, we had councils where the majority of the folks had full-time jobs, you know? And I think now we're, we have, there may be three of us that have full-time jobs.
And we just stop, like, we've brought that up multiple times. Well, people have full-time jobs, they are not active, they need to do more, they need to try harder. Sick of that. Truly, truly sick of that. You can be a working parent and still have time to be an active participant, active learner, and actively involved in city business. This is not the first time this has come up. It's come up over and over and over again and I am really tired of that. That is an elitist view. It's discouraging to people who are considering running for council or for being on committees because it's saying, your, your opinion doesn't matter, you're working too much, we don't want you around.
Right.
It's ridiculous. So I want to clear that up right now. You can be on council and you can work and you can have a family and you can volunteer and you cannot go to every single training that costs money. You cannot, you don't have to go to every single conference that's out there in order to do your job effectively. You can go out and you can go door knocking, you can go meet with HOAs, you can go meet with the police department, you can go meet with other police departments in other cities, you can go to other cities' committee meetings, you can go to all these places and meet people, which I know all of us do. You don't have to pay for that. My point is, we should not pretend like money is the magical thing that makes us be effective at our job. It's not. Going to trainings is great. It is a luxury, it is a privilege that we get when we're on council that we have this money and we need to be responsible for that money. If we're spending $3,000 per person right now, and I understand what you're saying, T.G., with some departments have more, but if we're looking at just the fire department and it's $500 per person, how can we justify that our training is more important than life-saving training? It's not. Flat out, it's not. You will never convince me. That's my point. So I still do want that training budget to see how much, it doesn't, I don't need names, but if it just says, we had three people, person one had this much training, person two had this much training, over however many years you can get it, that would be helpful because I want to see trends. Do we have, do we have one person or two people that go to a lot of trainings and then other people? I've, no, I went to one TML training in like 2022, I think in like January or something. I have been to trainings. I'm not trying to be a hypocrite. I have been to trainings that we paid for. But I think we need to be realistic with the amounts, especially when we're going into budget season, we have to be, we have to, we have to, if we're asking staff for something, we have to be willing to do it ourselves.
I have a quick question, real quick, yeah. So does each department choose what their training budget looks like? Because it feels like council budget is being compared. So let's say the fire department, they only have a $500 training usage. Is that because they can't make it to a lot of trainings because of the staff limitation that they have? You know, I, I just kind of felt like every department has the opportunity to come to council and request, it's not that they're being denied, it's just every department head has that ability to come and ask for those funds and it's not that council has been prioritizing itself. So I just wanted to just kind of get that clarity. Does each department choose what their training budget looks like?
Ms. Sanchez-Stevens, since I've been here, I've asked every department head in every budget cycle and each successive cycle has become more detailed, that when you come to me with your base budget, you will have training for every staff member. You do not have to identify exactly what that training is, but let's say it's a GIS technician who hasn't gone to a GIS conference in three years because GIS conferences cost a lot of money. It's not an excuse to me that we say, well, there's no training for a GIS technician. And so this year, in the IS department, you'll see that GIS technicians did go to training because they need to bring back more knowledge and skills about the ESRI. ESRI is the GIS platform that we use, that 99% of the world uses, so that they could help improve our interactive maps and our databases to help you make data-driven decisions. I'm using that as an example. Every department head has come to me and I've said, show me your training and why is that the training? That's how we build our budgets. Now, if the sky was not the limit, then I'm sure the fire department would ask for a lot more money. But as I look at Chief Troncoso, his budget has increased each year that I've been here because I've advocated with council that high-performing organizations invest in their employees and send them to meaningful training, not trivial training, not wasting taxpayer dollars. And so, yes, we'd love to ask for more, but we incrementally increased our training. So you can ask any department head over there, why is your training the dollar it is and what are you sending your staff to? Ms. Simics can do the same for her staff.
So our budget is a little bit high for just, for the city secretaries, but we're required to keep a certification and we're required to attend so many classes to keep that certification as a city secretary. So for a department of, let's say, just the city secretary side, ours is probably higher than many because we've, we have to keep that certification. The court budget is, is very low because they're only required to take one class a year to be able to keep their certification up. So it's a lot different when you're required to keep that certification, unless the city doesn't want you to have those certifications, you know? But I don't think that's, that's the case. So that's why ours seems kind of high. Now, for me, this past year, I didn't attend as many classes because I didn't need to attend any for the certification, as Valerie had to attend a lot because she needed to get her certification.
But I only attended what was required.
What was required. But it's still quite a bit, and our training is always out of the city. It's never out of the state. They have, we have, we've not had a conference in this, in the, in San Antonio area for a number of years. Most of ours, we have to either travel to Dallas, Fort Worth, Denton area, sometimes Houston, Corpus, those areas, very few of them are right here locally. Now, for myself, I've paid for some of mine myself, or I, or expenses, you know? We have to stay, we, when we're traveling that far, we have no choice. You know, you have to stay, you can't travel back and forth. That's just talking about the two budgets, you know, that we have.
All right, we're gonna move on to eight I, discussion on city council's denial of items forwarded for approval from boards, committees, commissions and corporations. Councilwoman Cunningham.
So this is another one where I am dataless and I would like to bring you guys data. I'll still work on getting it. The new website system has made it tricky for me to find things as easily as I used to be able to. I was real used to the old agendas and minutes. In the last year or so, there seems to be a pattern where certain committees bring something to council for our approval. It's already been through the gamut at their end. It's already gone through them listening to staff, the staff worked to bring it to them, all of that. And then when it comes to council, it's voted down by a split vote or by a whole vote. The most recent one was probably the most frustrating to me. We had the EDC who has their, they're their own independent entity. They have their own independent budget. They have to bring things over a certain amount to council because that's in their, their regulations. They brought to us the 78 corridor study, which, again, was in their budget for FY24. They had done the studies for it, they had already, they, I believe they had already put it out to bid and had, were bringing to us the, the amount of what it was actually gonna cost. Not 100% sure on that. Is that right, Kelsey?
You said the 78 corridor?
Yes.
It was a feasibility study.
That's right. Okay.
And it had already received three quotes.
Okay. So it was a feasibility study. It had already gotten quotes, they had already gone through all that work, our staff had gone through that work, our committee members had gone through that work and that had already gone, that was at least a year's worth of work because it was on the budget from last year or from fiscal year '24, which was done last summer. It came here and we said no, without having much background on it, without, to my knowledge, meeting with staff, without my knowledge, looking at the quotes, without my knowledge, or with my knowledge, not doing any of that stuff. We just said, no, we're not doing it. This has been something that I've been getting increasingly frustrated with as it keeps happening. If we don't trust the people that we put on committees, who we are appointing, we are putting out applications, it's a struggle to get people to apply for committees, it's a struggle to get people to show up when they get put on the committees. And we have people who put in a ton of work on those committees, who work on this project that we have appointed to those committees, that we have said, we trust you to be the voice of your district on that committee. If we are going to consistently vote down what they bring to us, then we need to wipe out the whole committee because what we are saying is we have no faith in you and what you're bringing to us. What is the point? What is the point of having those people on the committee? Why don't we just appoint ourselves as the EDC and go sit on that committee and pat ourselves on the back for how smart we are? There's no point. It's very disheartening for committee members on all of our boards and committees when they see that happen because why are they putting in the work? Why are they taking that time away from their family? Why are they reading their big packets? They have big packets, too. Why are they doing all that work just to have it turned down by council? And I understand, some of us have really good reasons for voting the way that we do and we explain and we have discussion and, and there's, oftentimes, there's, especially with planning, there's more discussion and information that we get after P&amp;Z meets before it comes to us. Like, sometimes the engineer says, well, they didn't fix everything that they said they were going to fix and so we have to vote no. But on things where that's not the case, if we're going to consistently vote that we have no trust in them and their opinions and we don't believe them, we don't think that they have good opinions, then I expect that if you have no trust in your, in your committee member for your district, that next meeting, you're voting them out. If this is gonna be a consistent practice, put your words into action. Because you're saying you don't trust them, then do something about it. Because it's not worth their time, we're gonna end up alienating these people who've put in hours and hours of work, time out of their lives to be on these committees and consistently say no. If you have a problem with something that comes to us, maybe one of the things that we could do is bring the committee to come present it and give us their opinion. Meet with your committee member when, oh, what was his name? I'm blanking on it. My old committee member on EDC.
Tease.
Tease, Robert Tease. I was like, I could see an R, but I couldn't figure it out. When he was my district rep, I met with him a few times to talk about the projects that they had going on, to kind of get an idea. If there was a big project, I'd come and say, hey, can you tell me a little bit more about this? The, the land swap was one of the big ones. We should be reaching out to our committees. We, if you have questions about what they're voting on or why they're bringing things unanimously to council, reach out and talk to your committee member. Because us voting it down without any conversation is not building those relationships. We are not, we got elected up here, but that does not mean that we are the smartest, brightest, best person in the entire city. It doesn't mean that we are the only ones whose opinion matters. We appoint people to committees to be the voice of the district and they may have a different voice than us and that's great. None of us think the same. And that's what makes us a strong council is because we bring in different ideas. If all of us were little puppets, it would be boring and nothing, if, nothing good would get done. But moving forward, I would just like us to be really thoughtful about, first of all, why we're voting against a recommendation from a committee. Two, what have you done to try to learn more from the person on your, especially the person that you appointed from your district to be on that committee, to talk to that person about what they did and what they think about it? And three, is this something that really needs to be, be voted against or is it something that we need more information on? Because it's, it's months and months and months of work. It's incredibly frustrating. I've been on several committees, just like Hetzel, just like Hicks, just like T.G.'s been on several. We've all been on committees and we've all been in places where we've felt like we were ineffective because we brought something to council. Mine was a communication and technology committee. We brought an 80-page report that we had worked on and council went, okay, that's really nice, and then didn't really do anything with it. That is incredibly deflating. We need to work with our committee members and if they're not voting on something or they don't know the background, then we can share that with them. But we have to work together with them. We are not the kings and queens who get to pound, pound the gavel and be the final say on stuff. We have to work with our committee members. So that's, that's why I put this on the agenda is because I have felt the frustration myself. I have heard from committee members who have put in the work and are very frustrated and want to quit. It is hard to get people who are committed to being on a committee, who are committed to doing good for Cibolo, whether we think that that good is the, is the right path and our good goes on this path, we all have the same goal in mind. We have to work better together with our committees and that is all.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Cunningham. Does anybody have any thoughts or comments on agenda item eight I? Mr. Roberts?
I just, I, I do feel your frustration, obviously, because we spent many hours on this last one. It's, it seems we turn things into a, a personal agenda around here and for whatever reason, that's, that's not the intent of that. We're here to represent the entire city and for the best of the city. It's, it is incredibly frustrating when you expend that type of effort and you don't, it's like you don't want to hear, with that report, you might have heard how great this actually is, that we do think it will be, but you don't want to have that input because it, it will give you the, then you won't be able to justify the way you're wanting to feel. And, and I just, it's, it's just disheartening when we expend that amount of effort and then it's just, it's like they don't trust you or they don't believe what you've done.
Conversely, I've read every document that the EDC has created over the land swap. I'm 100% against it more than I was before. So consistency is what I am and I didn't think we should have done the LOI. We didn't have the information that night. It was admitted later in an open session that they withheld information, that staff withheld information from this council. And as I've read the documents and I've looked at things, it gets worse and worse and worse. And so I was consistent then, I'm consistent now. I think it's a bad idea. I think there's ways to do things differently. And that doesn't diminish a council or a, or a board or commission's role. It just says that as this voting member for council one, I don't agree with that idea, right? And I think that's the role of council is to say, hey, we want to hear what your ideas are, but ultimately, we have to make that decision. And I've been on the other end of it. You're right. Plenty of other times I was on the other end of it. I was on the other end of it. I was on the other end of it before Meritage was Meritage. Right? So I have seen that go completely full circle. Well, you know, if they'd have just paid attention, but they didn't. Right? That's the way the cookie crumbles sometimes. Right? It didn't stop me from volunteering. It didn't stop me from saying what I thought. But, you know, sometimes the seven or eight people up here have a different idea about what's going on, and that's their prerogative. And that's why we have elections. And I'm, you know, I'm, I'm glad to stand here and say, this is what I think. And if somebody has a different idea and the people in that district want something else, great. That's America. But to turn over everything to a group of people that are volunteering just because they've done a lot of work, I'm not saying that's bad or wrong. I'm just saying, no one's come to us and said, well, they have. They have. They've come and, and they've get mixed signals from this council because, to Mr. Roberts' point, there's people with agendas on this item, like the last one for sure. And whether it's an agenda because you personally don't like it, or you, or you just don't think it's the right thing for the city, I hate the word, even use the word agenda, because really, it's just what your opinion of it is. And I've gotten all the documents, and I have a very strong opinion on it. And that's just that, right? But I'm only one vote. So, and I'll stand here and tell you reason after reason, and we can do it on Thursday night if you want. But the reality of it is, is that just because you're volunteering your time, doesn't mean that your answer and your commission's right. And the seven of us, with the mayor included as eight, when he needs to break a tie, have to make the decision. And that's how the system is set up. And so, there are times when you're disappointed as a committee person saying, man, I did everything I could and it just, they didn't listen, they didn't hear it. They have a different idea, they have different thoughts, a different direction, whatever. But you just dig in and do it the next day, the, the next best way you can. But part of that is we all have to have the information. When we're not getting all the information we need, we need to find it, or we need to make the best effort decision we can on the information we're given. So, I'm forgetting more information, not less.
Anyone else?
And just to clarify, I'm not saying nobody, we should blindly vote for every committee thing that comes up to us. That is not my intent with this. I've seen a pattern where we've consistently been denying things that come up from committee without much reason and without much communication with the committee itself. So if we have a question about it and we see it on our agenda, and you've looked through, and I don't doubt that you've looked through every piece of paper, are you reaching out to your committee member on that committee to talk to them about the information that they've gotten? Because if they're going in blind, okay. If they're going in blind and they're, they're voting on this, they may not have the same background information you have. They may not have read their whole packet, but we're supposed to work as a team with them. And yes, we're the final vote, but we are also volunteers. Our 92 whole dollars a month doesn't necessarily make this a full-time job.
You're paid. That's why I like the two bucks. You're paid. Now you're counted. But to that end, right? I mean, you can get in a situation where we've gotten to in the past where we were overseeing committees, right? And people were upset that we were two hands on these committees and telephoning them. Right? I mean, there's a balance in this. But in the end, they have to come up with their decision and we have to come up with ours. And those might not be the same. Without, because if, if we become just as heavy-handed, this is what I want to see, I was never that way in P&amp;Z. I would call Councilman Schultz and I would say, hey, here's what I'm hearing, here's what I'm seeing. I could use your help, or just FYI, right? And she might say, well, you know, it'd really be nice if whatever, but you do what you do, right? That's where it needs to be. And there was times when I was certainly not in the same camp as Councilwoman Schultz. Just didn't happen at all. And she respected that, and I respected her. She had a different job than mine. And I think you just have to take that into consideration when you're on a commission. You want to be on a council, run. Right? It's different. You may not like it. You might like a commission better. You might not. That's for individual people to decide. But, but being concerned about the ultimate decision that this body makes versus what your body makes can't be the reason you're serving. It has to be because you're just trying to make things better. And if they didn't listen this time, well, maybe they'll listen next time. Or maybe, maybe we didn't completely think out our ideas. Maybe we thought they were great, but we didn't know something that they know in the back of the executive session about that. Right?
But are we communicating that back to them? Because if we're not,
As much as you possibly can.
If we're not communicating anything to the committees, then nothing will ever change. It'll be the same result every time.
As much as you possibly, some things we can't commit, can send back to them, right?
Right.
So you do the best you can without being this heavy-handed person, anyway.
All right. Yeah, exactly. This could go on all night. Let's, let's wrap it up. Anyone else? Have any thoughts on that one? Okay, let's move on. All right. Next one is 8J. Discussion from council members that have attended seminars, events, or meetings. We'll start with Councilman Hicks.
Well, I went to the TML mid-year conference. I mean, we can sit here for another 15 minutes if y'all want me to go page by page what I wrote down.
Just the highlights.
Just saying. Got a lot of information there. There was nine different sessions. 13 Ways to Kill Your Community, Expanding Economic Prosperity. And that was from Larry McManus from the governor's office. Stayed on the water in Texas, Disaster and Emergency Management. That was a good one because there's 53. For, for those of us that don't realize, if there was a disaster, kind of like what's in Maryland, it would, for FEMA to, to come in, we'd need to, to spend, 53-plus million is our threshold.
Jesus.
It's, it's a lot. The future, the future of the transportation, understanding reliability, Texas, good governance, gets work done, advocacy and influence, and then updates. And then there's a TML, I know that you'll want to, to know about this, legislative updates, but there's TML legislative process, municipal policy summit, which I know that you want some stuff put on there this coming year for next year's legislation. That's August 12th and 13th. That I'll be attending, I guess, on my own dime, which I have no problem with. And then I went to ACOG last Friday, and I was with my P&amp;Z committee member at the ACOG for the Plan, Planning and Zoning Workshop, dealt with fundamentals of P&amp;Z ethical principles and planning, subdivision planning. And she was asking me a lot of questions that I had a lot of answers to, to help her out in working with my committee member. Commissioners court this morning. This is something I'd, I'd like for us to look at, Mr. Reed. Texas Water Development Board Flood Infrastructure Fund Grant. The application is due April 15th. It's a 25 for us, 75 for the state. Things that it can be used for are studies. It can be used for projects, and then major projects.
We're already working on that, sir, just to let you know.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And then for, for those that know anybody that was a Vietnam veteran, there will be a veteran service in Seguin at the Veterans Building out there for Vietnam veterans. There'll be a memorial for them, and there'll be handed out pins for those that are Vietnam vets. That's all I've got.
Councilman Hetzel. Councilwoman Sanchez-Stevens.
I'm just going to echo a little bit of Councilman Hicks. I also attended the TML mid-year conference, but just for the sake of time, I won't go into all those details. And also went to the free P&amp;Z meeting on Friday, also with my commissioner just as well, and got a chance to, to hear that, all that alongside with her. Community side-wise, I was able to go to Officer Hackney swearing-in ceremony. That, that was really great that we have a new officer on our force. Also, I am part of the SEUC cohort, Leadership Cohort, something I took on past September. It was free to all residents of the SEUC ISD. And just wanted to kind of go into the schools, kind of see how they function, the in and outs of them, and then just see who our community leaders are in the school districts just as well. Had a chance to visit, they did a fine art showcase at STEEL, just covering everything from their dance team to their band team to their arts program, all that, all the offerings for our students in the city, as well as also had a opportunity to do their career in a technical education program that covers your DECA programs, your medical assistance programs, dental. So it's just been a, a very insightful wealth of, just wealth of information, opportunities really that our students have. And it's just great to see that firsthand. It's like a once-a-month session, so I encourage anybody from the city, the next time they comes around, I believe it was like in August, where it was presented to all residents in the SEUC ISD, and it's completely free. And they just want participating stakeholders in the community to come in and see what the school, how the school runs and what they offer our students. And also had a really great SRO presentation last Thursday with our Sybilla Police Academy. That's also a free thing. Don't have to pay for that. And also just getting a lot of insights to what our police department undergoes, and that was a really great presentation. Well done.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Sanchez-Stevens. And on my part, I mean, I'm, I'm going somewhere pretty much every day representing the city, so too, too much for me to even list. I don't even bother trying to list, list off what all I do, so I'll pass on. Councilman Mahoney.
I went to the same mid-year conference of the Texas Municipal League, a day and a half up in San Marcos. There was about seven or eight breakout sessions, and it was somewhat interesting. Some of it, not so much, but it was nice to hear an overview of what certain state agencies do, but I wouldn't call it training. But glad, I'm glad I went.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll go back to Councilwoman.
I did a few, I did a bunch of like little meetings, but I did a couple of online trainings on HUD and the HUD opportunities available. There's a lot of different fundings. A lot of it is very specific to certain populations. But any of the grants and any of the opportunities that I'm finding, I'll send to our city manager to pass on to our grant person.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cunningham. Councilwoman Roberts, anything?
This past Friday, I spent the better part of the day at Wiederstein for Career Day. I just, what I'd like to say more than anything is thanks to Mr. Reed and his staff. They totally went above and beyond. Police Department, Fire Department, the kids couldn't have been more impressed. And then Mr. Huggins pulled the rabbit out of the hat with, with Mr. Wells, and we got two game wardens. And it was, it, it was just great to see the kids and see them interact. And I, I want to tell you how much I appreciate the city. That, that's what sets us apart.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. And we also had someone from the Planning Department there, and Animal Services was there as well. And from all accounts, the kids loved all four different service areas. So I appreciate you, Mr. Roberts, extending that to us.
TG?
I'm here.
Okay. Moving on to Item 8K. Discussion on Items the City Council Would Like to See on Future Agendas. We'll start with Councilman Benson.
Yeah, I would like to have a discussion next meeting regarding SRO funding for the New Year, based on House Bill 3, and have a discussion about that.
Okay.
I think we talked about-
SROs on HB3. Okay, Roberts?
I'm good.
Mahoney?
I'm in.
Cunningham?
I'm in.
Okay. Sanchez-Stevens?
I'm in.
Hetzel? No. Hicks?
I'm good.
Okay. All right. Moving on to L. Discussion Action on the Review and Confirmation of All Upcoming Special Meetings and Workshops. And scheduling the time, date, and place of additional special meetings or workshops. Peggy Simics.
I have a question.
Nothing to highlight for the community? Okay.
Saturday, the 30th, is the Lions Club Easter in the Park in Shirts, the Pickrell Park. I know that a lot of our Shirts residents, or Sybilla residents, go to that one as well.
Thank you, Katie.
Always good. We have-
Yeah, I know. We're on to a 9A public hearing.
We've got the bulk drop-off.
Oh, yeah. Bring your trash in those dumpsters this weekend. Okay.
Again, this week. It was last weekend and this weekend.
And it's only, what, Thursday, Friday, Saturday this week because of Easter Sunday?
Correct. No hazardous material this time. That was all last week.
Yeah, the Easter egg hunt was last weekend, and thank you, Councilwoman Sanchez-Stevens and Councilwoman Cunningham for coming out. It was a good event. All right. Moving on to 9A. Conduct a Public Hearing Regarding a Unified Development Code, UDC Amendment to Article 18, to Eliminate the Sidewalk Requirements in the Old Town District. Ms. Huerta.
Yes. This was brought forward as a result of direction from council to staff to bring a code amendment to the UDC excluding properties located within the Old Town District from the provision of sidewalk requirements. This was the result of multiple property owners located within the Old Town District voicing concerns over the difficulty meeting the requirement due to the size or configuration of the older lots. During the development of property, property owners are usually, are always required to construct sidewalks along both sides of the streets, or make a payment in lieu of an amount to substitute for the construction of the sidewalks at a later date. The UDC, Section 18.17A, reads, sidewalks shall be required along both sides of all streets throughout the city, except along Interstate Highways 35 and 10. All lots must provide access to a concrete sidewalk. The proposed ordinance will amend this section of the code by removing the requirement from properties located within the Old Town District. Notice was published within the local newspaper on February 25th. Individual letters were sent out by mail to 234 property owners. To date, staff has received zero in favor and one in opposition. Public hearings were scheduled for March 13th with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and today, March 26th with City Council, with approval or disapproval scheduled tentatively for April 9th.
Thank you very much, Ms. Huerta. The time is now 9:56 PM. I'm going to open up the public hearing. If anyone here would like to speak on this agenda item or this public hearing item, please come up to the microphone. Hearing done. We will close the meeting, or the public hearing, at 9:56 PM. Moving on to 9B. Conduct a Public Hearing Regarding the Repeal of Ordinance Number 1417, granting a variance for 504 File Road, to eliminate the requirement for sidewalks per Section 18.17.A of the UDC with conditions. Ms. Huerta.
Okay. This is directly related to the prior public hearing. At the January 23rd meeting, council directed staff to begin the process of amending that UDC section to eliminate sidewalk requirements. And we were also directed to include revisiting Ordinance 1417, with the intent to remove the conditions from that approved variance. Published within, the notice was published within the newspaper on February 26th, 25th, and the city website. Individuals, individual letters were sent by mail to 15 property owners within 200 feet. To date, staff received zero in favor and one in opposition. Public hearings were scheduled on March 13th with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and March 26th with City Council, with approval or disapproval scheduled tentatively for April 9th.
Thank you very much, Ms. Huerta. The time is now 9:58 PM. I'm going to open up the public hearing. If anyone wants to speak on this public hearing item, please come up to the microphone. Hearing done. We will close the public hearing at 9:58 PM. Moving on to 9C. Conduct a Public Hearing Regarding a Conditional Use Permit, Cup Request, to Allow Accessory Residential Units, Residential District Use, for Certain Real Property Located at 165 Elaine Schlotter Parkway, legally described as ABS 194 Sir James Jones, Track Number 6, 5.01AC. Ms. Huerta.
Yes. The owners are Henry and Gentana Alves. It is located on Elaine Schlotter Parkway, north of Green Valley Drive, Council District 1. Feature land uses neighborhood residential. Existing zoning is SF6. They are, they are requesting a conditional use permit for an accessory residential unit, proposed for a mother-in-law, mother-in-law quarter. Currently on the applicant property is one primary residence with an accessory structure. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to place a third accessory structure to be used as a mother-in-law flat. Notice was published in the local newspaper on February 25th and the city website. Individual letters were sent by mail to 12 property owners within 200 feet of the site. To date, staff has received zero in favor and one in opposition. Public hearings were scheduled on March 23rd with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and on March 26th with council. Approval or disapproval of the zoning ordinance is tentatively scheduled for April 9th. Included in the staff report are, should council consider approval, staff is recommending seven conditions be included. is recommending seven conditions be included.
Thank you, Ms. Huerta. I'm going to open up the public hearing for Agenda Item Number 9C. It is 10 PM. If you wish to speak on this item, please come up to the microphone. Welcome, sir. When you get to the microphone, please state your name and your address.
My name is Henry Alves. I live at 165 Elaine Schlotter Parkway. I've been working on this project for six months now. And I've got nothing but red tape, questions via email, phone calls. Everyone keeps quoting the UDC, but I can't get an answer. I'm not trying to develop anything. I'm trying to build a mother-in-law flat. It's that simple. We went to the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting on the 13th. It was approved. I assumed that this would be over by now, and I could go ahead and start building. You know, it's been a long time. I just asked that, y'all, give me the go-ahead and build the project that I've started six months ago. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome. And please state your name and your address into the microphone.
Yes, sir. I'll be glad to. My name is Diana Weimar. I live at 136 Running Brook. That is in Charleston Park. My neighbors are here with me, because their property actually is across the street from Mr. Alves's property. And Mrs. Cunningham, or Ms. Cunningham, I would like to say I agree with you 100% that you need to have full disclosure before you can make a good decision. When I started this research, I started on zoning. I still contend that the first acre is actually zoned C1R, because there is another ordinance on it. It's ordinance number 933, and it changed it to light commercial retail. So you have that one acre, and then he has a remaining 4.01 acres, which I contend has never been rezoned. That is actually a no zone. But all that is moot, because the state of Texas passed a statute, and the statute is Chapter 247. And 247 says that he can build his accessory dwelling without having to come to council. He does not have to cup his property. The only reason he would have to cup his property is if he wants to build this accessory dwelling on the C1R. That's the only reason to cup it. And the statute, if you go to 247.001, says it can be administratively decided, does not have to be discussed by council or reviewed. And guess what? From the date of his application, the city has 60 days to either approve or deny. You are 17 days away from his 60 days. He applied on February 12 for his accessory dwelling application. Then you come down, and the part that we were concerned about is, well, if he builds an accessory dwelling, and then he subdivides it off, and then he builds another one, and then he subdivides it off, and then we end up with a small community out there. But the state says, no, he's only allowed to build one accessory dwelling, mother-in-law suite, not including garages and all that stuff. The next thing that it says is that he has recourse, that if the city drags, drags their feet on this, they, you know, you do have the power of deciding what the structure should look like, and the quality of the structure. But his recourse is he can actually apply straight to the Attorney General of Texas. So I am stating to the city council that you're wasting his time. Go ahead and let them administratively approve it. Do not cup the property. Keep the C1R. And then let's go back and review and study and see if we can find an ordinance for this SF3/SF6, because I don't see it. I have looked and looked. And that's why I created this document for you. It was, it basically tracks all the ordinances that I've found and cannot found, based on maps that I'm getting, given instead of ordinances. But your thoughts keep working even after you publish. So I have created a much easier condensed addendum to the document if you're interested in having it. So I'm open for questions if you have any. Okay. Thank you very much. Y'all have a nice day.
No. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Is there anyone else who would wish us to speak on this item? Hearing done. We will close the public hearing at 10:05 PM. Thank you. Next item is 9D. Conduct a Public Hearing Testimony Concerning the Proposed Annexation and Permanent Assignment of a Public Facilities PF Zoning District Designation of 3.490 acres located between Bolton Road and IH10 West of certain real property legally described as Block 11, I'm sorry, Lot 11, Block ADDN Countryside Acres, 3.49 AC. Ms. Huerta?
Yes. This is for the City of Cibolo Fire Station Number 4 and Police Substation. The city is the owner of the property. It's 3.49 acres located in the ETJ. The proposed zoning is for public facilities. It's currently vacant, but proposed for safety services, which will include the fire station and police substation. It will be located in District 7 upon annexation. The property owned by the city is planned for the development of the fire station along with the police substation, and this will bring the property into the city limits and assign a permanent zoning designation of public facilities. Notice was published in the newspaper and on the website, oh, no, I'm sorry. The public hearing was mailed to the required public entities such as Guadalupe County, Green Valley Special Utility District, Shirts EMS, Marion Independent School District, and the Cibolo Fire Department. Oh, yes, and published in the paper on March 10. In your packet, it includes all the considerations, the criteria when considering voluntary annexation.
Thank you, Ms. Huerta. The time is now 10:07 PM. I'm going to open up the public hearing for Agenda Item 9D. Anybody here to speak on Agenda Item 9D? Hearing done. We will close the public hearing at 10:07 PM. Moving on to 9E. Conduct a Public Hearing Regarding a Variance Request to Code of Ordnances, Section 58-5, to Allow a Wall Sign That Does Not Face a Right-of-Way at 778 Cibolo Valley Drive, Suite 111. Ms. Huerta?
Yes. The owners are Endeavor Real Estate Group, represented by Michelle Romano from SignTech Inc. The location is Borgfield Market on Cibolo Valley Drive, Council District 2, currently zoned Retail Office C3. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow a sign to be placed on the back of the building that faces the lot. The sign ordinance prohibits wall signs to be placed on facades that do not face public or private right-of-ways, of which the Walmart parking lot is neither. The sign currently on the rear elevation was approved erroneously in December of 2022. However, all recent applications have been enforced in accordance with its requirements since the discovery and understanding of the section of the sign ordinance. The neighboring tenant in Suite 107 was denied the same variance request at the January 9 meeting of this year by city council. Notice was published within the local newspaper on February 25 and the city website. Individual letters were sent by mail to nine property owners within 200 feet of the site. To date, staff has received zero in favor and zero in opposition. Public hearings were scheduled for March 13 with the Plan and Zoning Commission, and March 26 with council. Approval/disapproval is tentatively scheduled for April 9.
Thank you very much, Ms. Huerta. I'm going to open up the agenda, or the public hearing for Agenda Item Number 9E. The time is 9:0, I'm sorry, 10:09 PM. If anyone is here to speak on this item, please come to the microphone. Hearing done. We will close the public hearing at 10:09 PM. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 10. Resolution A. Approval/disapproval of a Resolution of the City of Cibolo, Texas, Relating to Amending the Personnel Policy by Adding Two Weeks of Paid Parental Leave to Full-Time Employees Following the Birth of an Employee's Child or the Placement of a Child with an Employee in Connection with Adoption or Foster Care. Mr. Reed?
Thank you, Mayor, members of City Council. I'm returning to you tonight with a resolution that would amend the city's personnel policy by adding a parental leave policy. Bruce Knott made that presentation. And as you know, Bruce Knott's last day was last Friday, so that is why you get Wayne and not Bruce, or you get Bruce Wayne, maybe. Okay. That's why I have a day job. All right. This policy was introduced to council on February 27. Based on the feedback from the last presentation, the policy remains identical as presented. In short, this policy would provide two weeks of paid leave to full-time employees following the birth of an employee's child, or placement of a child with an employee through foster or adoption, following the procedures that are in the policy. Lastly, I was asked to provide detailed fiscal analysis. I sent this to the entire city council earlier today. I would like to share, the record shows that, looking at our historical data of employees who have been out related to the birth of a child, or fostering and adoption of a child, our records show that in FY23, we had eight employees on leave for that, and the value of those eight employees off for two weeks was $17,100. And in the first six months of FY24, we've had three employees out related to the birth of a baby, and that value for their two weeks off is $5,900. It's important to note, right, when an employee takes off presently, they have to burn their sick leave for a related incident like this, or their vacation time if they have no sick time. So what this does is, it really just allows the employee to delay using the sick or leave time. In FY23 and FY24, if we had this in place, we would not have on our payroll incurred a higher expense. But at some point in the future, those employees have those extra two weeks, be it sick, or vacation, or a combination of the two. I am happy to answer any questions that you have. Again, the policy remains identical to what was presented previously. The PowerPoint that's on the overhead here is identical to the one that was presented February 27. I am happy to walk through it again. I only have it as backup for right now.
What is the bereavement policy in the city of Cibolo?
Give me just a second, sir, and I'll pull that up.
Babies, not deaths.
Right. So I would like to know why if, if my spouse dies, and I work for the city of Cibolo, what kind of vacation I get?
I'm just going to pull it up. But we do provide time off for bereavement.
Three days is a big deal.
If you want to turn your microphone on, I'll just pull up the policy to verify, not verify the days. I'm sure Brian is correct on that.
If the death is in state, it's three days. If death is out of state, it's five days.
Okay. So the reason I think this is germane to the conversation is, is that we're talking about giving people a couple of weeks of vacation for a known event that's coming for 10 months-ish. Maybe you find out the first month, but gestation in human is 10 months. So nine months, you know, planning for sick and vacation can be done, but you're walking around one day, and your spouse is no longer with you, and we give three days.
Five days.
Three days or five, right? So I'm just, I mean, we can go down these roads of these personnel policies, and we can kind of, we can find all kinds of ways to, to whatever. I'm just saying, I mean, I think, to me, this is nice to have in a budget that's really good. This is not necessarily something that we need to have in a city that is not so good now, budget-wise. And if this is the case, then I think we need to actually look at what the other policies are for, like, real things that happen to people, too. Like, people's spouses just sometimes aren't there the next day, right? And I, so I think that we're creating categories of life events that seem to be more important than other categories of life events. And I'm not saying that this is not a thing that we could do. I'm saying, if we're going to do this, then we really need to look at everything. Because the statistics that Mr. Reed sent out today were, you know, I guess, run-of-the-mill kind of, what you would say is our workforce is about this much in the childbearing age and that kind of stuff. But you've got a lot of people who have completely different family concerns that probably could use a couple of weeks off, that will never, never need or be able to partake of this, right? And so I just think, before we just jump into this, we need to maybe have a discussion about what, what really is the role of the city? What is the role of your employer when life events happen? And before we head long into this, maybe we should take a look at other things in our policy manual that need to be looked at.
Okay. Well, no, I do agree that we do need to look at bereavement for the death of a spouse or child, you know, somebody within the household. You know, I agree. I know with my company, it's two weeks, so 10 working days. And so whether or not that's too much or too little, I don't know. But it's different than what we got. But I do want to stay focused on this one particular issue and take a vote on it as far as the resolution goes. We've already taken several stabs at this, I believe. I don't think this is the first time it's come to us.
Well, February 27, and y'all discussed it based upon that direction. We did not make changes based upon the individual comments.
Right. And so, you know, if we do want to come back and look at our bereavement policy as a separate resolution, then by all means, let's do that. But I think that our staff are owed a decision on this one. Katie?
So policies like this, and like bereavement, are really good tools that the city can use to increase retention. When you lose an employee, you have to advertise it. You have people who are then overworked because they're having to pick up the slack from that vacancy. And then you have to onboard someone, so you're losing all that time and that money in training and getting someone new in that position. So two weeks of leave, while, yes, you do, you may have 10 months to plan and know that you have a baby coming, if you're getting eight hours a month in leave for 10 months, that's two weeks, that's not going to cover your entire time out. Daycares will not take babies until they are six to eight weeks old. Most of them are eight weeks. So if you're a parent that has to work, and you have both parents who have to work, or you're a single parent that has to work, you don't have the option of just, like, leaving your kid at home in the crib and coming to work and figuring it out later. You have to have that daycare. Recovery, I'm not going to go into nitty-gritty details. You're not physically ready to come back to work after two weeks. Two weeks is a very lean policy, and granted, our budget is very lean, too.
This isn't just about mom.
No, this is parental leave, because you need help. Believe me. It's very difficult. You've had ki-, well, you haven't physically had kids, but you have kids.
Yeah, I'm going to back up and see if we can help.
Wouldn't you have wanted time to be with your wife to help her out?
Wanted is a completely different thing.
Right. But I mean, if this is something that we can do, and we have the opportunity to do it, then I think we should. When you have people who are unable to go back to work, unable to make childcare arrangements, have a kid in NICU, are wasting, blowing through all of their leave time on their maternity leave, that's, you're going to lose those employees. You are much more likely to lose those employees. The trends in maternity leave, or parental leave after birth, have not been trending down and decreasing the amount of time that people are given. It's going up because they see the benefits of it. But that's my opinion.
But you make my point there, Councilwoman, is, you know, they get their two free weeks, and then they're like, you know, I just need to stay home. And then those other workers are having to pull that other person's weight. You know, it's not fair to those. They're having to pull the other weight of the other person, and then comes along and say, you know what? I'm just not going to go. And so then you're out that, that person altogether, especially if they take FMLA. And then after they take six months of FMLA, and they're like, you know what?
FMLA is unpaid, though, so we're not losing anything from that.
But they can, you can get paid whatever you're sick, sick and vacation you've got while you're on FMLA. I understand that.
Yep.
Mayor, but then you've got to go out and hire somebody, because after that six months, she decides, you know, I'm just not going to go back to work.
Yeah. Well, I think-
So it puts a strain on the other people. So-
I think that's the exception and not the rule, though. I don't think that that's the majority of the case. You know what I mean? That most people, you know, decide that they're going to quit after they have a baby, and then burn their time, and then quit. I mean, I think that happens. I'm not saying it doesn't happen. But I don't, I think that's the exception rather than the rule. You know what I mean?
Mayor and council, this is but one policy and a slew of personnel policies that the city has. Our personnel policies are just one tool in our tool belt- Our personnel policies are just one tool in our tool belt to retain top talent, recruit top talent. When I started here, the city was experiencing greater than 23% turnover. That means 23, say it's 25, one in every four employees was turning over every 12 months. And it created massive service delivery issues in multiple departments, including the police department, Public Works, the fire department, the general staffing. We have been under 10% turnover since January 2023. It's because you have supported policies and employee items that have helped us attract top talent and keep that top talent. This is just one policy. And as was described February 27th, it was asked at one of the city manager town halls with the employees, what about this? And it was right after the budget. And I said, I'm not approaching council until after the new year with it. Whatever your pleasure is on this, I understand that decision and I will support that decision.
Councilman Mahoney?
Just a question, is there a snapshot comparison to some other cities that you're familiar with? Does New Braunfels, Sagin, Selma have something like this?
I have a list of cities and other metro areas, but just around us, New Braunfels offers 80 hours after six months of hire. Bernie offers 80 hours with no reference to how much on the job.
Specific to this?
Parental paid leave. Yes, sir. Yeah, we surveyed Shirts, Sagin, Selma, San Marcos, and Bernie, and New Braunfels. Only Bernie and New Braunfels have put a policy in place. Some others said that they're looking at it, but I don't take that as any action.
Well, then I just want to echo what Ms. Cunningham said. It's a competitive market out there for employees that are gonna find a place that they're comfortable with these kinds of things. And are we gonna keep them? Are we gonna keep the good ones? We're, I think we've gotta face it and be competitive in these areas. So I'm in favor of this.
Want to make a motion?
Sure. I will move that council approve this resolution relating to amending the personnel policy by adding two weeks of paid parental leave to full-time employees following the birth of an employee's child or the placement of a child with an employee in connection with adoption or foster care.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Let's electronic vote. Motion carries four to three.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to 11A ordinance, approval disapproval of an ordinance waiving platting requirements per UDC Section 20.1.8 for certain real property. 10-833-IH-10 legally described as ABS 134-Ser Jose Flores 7.5.
Yes, the owners are MLM Trust, represented by Mayan James Green of Weber LLC, Council District 7, located in the Muir District. Currently, a concrete asphalt batching plant, temporary. Utility providers are water, GV sod, and electric GVEC. If you recall, the applicant was granted a conditional use permit to allow a concrete asphalt batching plant temporary, temporary use on January 23rd of this year. As stipulated by ordinance 1437, the conditional use permit is subject to the condition that either, to either plot the property or obtain a waiver to platting requirements. The applicant property is located within I-10, the Muir District, and it's currently not platted. The UDC does state within, that the properties must be platted when it's non-residential and multifamily during the construction of a non-residential or multifamily structure or moving a primary structure under a piece of property. Techstat awarded the applicant contract for the expansion of the IH-10 corridor. The applicant intends to operate onsite until October of 2026 or upon completion of the project. The applicant, upon completion of the project, the applicant must restore the property to the approved permit grading plan. The request to waive the platting requirement is in line with the specific conditions of their contract and of the conditional use permit ordinance conditions. However, several of the conditions that were in the conditional use permit have currently not been met. And it is up to, it is within the council's purview to decide if to approve or deny this request based on the non-adherence to the existing conditional use permit.
Do we have a recommendation from our attorney?
Yes, the city attorney's office recommends denial of a waiver of the platting requirement due to the continued violations of the city code.
Thank you, sir. Do you buy our motion?
Make a motion, we deny the platting, deny waiving the platting requirements per UDC Section 20.1.8 for certain real property, 10-833-IH-10 legally described as ABS 134-Ser Jose Flores 7.5 acres.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. We can vote electronically, please. All right, it is unanimous, seven zero denial. Moving on to 12, staff update. I'll just let you, Mr. Reed, take this and let us know what's important.
Absolutely, there's, on the list are some things that have not changed, such as the road grade projects. The update I gave you two weeks ago is still relevant for Dean Bolton Lower Sagin, so I will skip over those. Do want to say that I'm still committed to bringing counsel the products from the strategic management workshop, which was on March 16th. And I'll bring those products to you on the April 23rd city council meeting. I want to thank the mayor and the council members in attendance for your engagement during the workshop. The executive team is laser-focused on returning to council on all those action items. The request for proposals, the city has received bids for the 2024 Siblo Street Preservation Package Number One. Staff will be bringing forward a recommendation for a word of contract in April. The streets covered include Buffalo Crossing, Bentwood Ranch, and Bentwood Pass. This includes making the traffic calming improvements on Buffalo Crossing after the microseal is applied. Public Works Drainage Project Updates. Some of you who frequent Bentwood Ranch, we made improvements to the drainage way that runs through Bentwood Ranch that is owned by the HOA, and they maintain that. The section that then goes from the edge of the neighborhood into the park, we met onsite months ago with Mr. Roberts, Mr. Mahoney, HOA representatives, several staff members. And recognizing the work that they were doing, we agreed to make drainage way improvements, which were very minor but significant, and improve the bridge on the trail. That project is done. It was a small project. They will be moving on to the Lantana Drainage Improvements, which is something that Mr. Hicks, Mr. Benson, and the mayor and I met out with the city engineer months ago with a resident of that neighborhood. The survey was done. Our engineers, Chris Otto and his team, have done the grading plan to readjust that drainage way and correct some of the flow. And that work will begin here in the next 30 days or so. When I say 30 days, sometime in April, they will begin. So I wanted to give you some good updates on drainage improvements that our Public Works team is outdoing. The transfer of the title of the HEB open space, I'm not gonna call it HEB open space. I'm gonna call it the City of Siblo Open Space. You can call it Town Creek Open Space. After council approved the transfer of title to the city at its March 12th meeting, the staff did record that deed by Friday of that week. The next steps are to initiate construction of the parking lot. We do have final designs on that parking lot, and I'll have more details for council. How we'll proceed, will we put it out for bid? Will Public Works try to do it itself? And so you'll have an idea of the parking lot. And then we'll also come back to you for improvements around the pond. The City Hall Furniture Update, you're sitting in your new chairs. There's also new chairs in the back. So these chairs are industrial-grade commercial chairs, and I hope that all of you enjoying them over the older ones. The older ones have been reused, and so those are going into good use. The front vestibule, some of you may have walked through that today. It is partially completed, so the contractor sub was here on this past Saturday. Ms. Simics was here to just make sure that they had the access they needed. They finished up around 3:00. They will come back because they were having some electrical and peace issues. And so that work will be done in the near future. And as I said, there's no updates on the roads that you don't already know. And then the wayfinding signage directing the public to all city buildings. At its January 9th, 2024 meeting, council discussed and gave direction on placing informational signs in front of city buildings. And this was a Mr. Hicks item. Since that time, I directed staff to look into developing a building wayfinding sign program that lists all city services in the building and is directional towards other buildings like City Hall to the City Hall Annex, City Hall Annex to over here, or where's the Public Works Building? Public Works Building, where do you go to the City Hall? So forth, so on. I signed this to Public Works. They have provided me with a schematic of a sign, but they have not completed the greater aspect of, for each city facility, what's a proposed wayfinding sign. And so we will be in front of council on April 23rd with that.
Well, it just didn't include that. It has to do with the bulletin board out here. Come on, that big wooden board out there, we need to do something about that as well. It had to do more than that. That's why I had it on there as a discussion item. So I could bring that up, and then it got placed on yours. I got no, I'm just saying, it had to do more than just the wayfiring signs. It had to do with that big wooden board we've got out there that we need to do something with, whether we enclose it with rock or something, but, you know, we need to do something.
I appreciate that, Mr. Hicks. I've informed council before that we will be installing a metal frame out there where you see the wooden one. That is in the Public Works queue to get done. We're trying to finish the, get the contractor to finish up their last work, but we will be replacing that wooden bulletin board outside, as I've reported before. I agree with that. I'm separating that because I've consistently updated council on that sign. It worked well. Ms. Simics and Ms. Chapman said, wow, you know, for a temporary sign, it gathered and created more interest in what we were posting than when it was attached to the building. And I said, well, then, let's find an inexpensive way to make that a permanent location for it. And I've always given that update to council, and that's why I separated it, Mr. Hicks, from the agenda item from January 9th. It's not that we're not doing the other one, but that's why I'm coming back with wayfinding signage, based on what I said. So if I'm off mark on that other, the wayfinding signage at different city facilities, I'd love for you to help me.
No, that had to do with it. But, you know, I just wanted something, it had to do with both of them. I was wondering where we're at with the wayfinding because people keep coming here, they need to go in inspections. They keep coming to City Hall.
Yes, sir.
So that's kind of what it had to do, deal with. I mean, especially if you go over to the Public Works Building, you don't want to be going all the way back to animal facilities when you're needing to go to the Public Works. But I was wanting to encompass both of them because I'd like not to just have some big metal sign out there, but have somebody that puts masonry around it to where it matches the building. I mean, that's kind of where I was going with that. And the same with the wayfiring signs where whatever it is, it kind of matches with the building. You don't want something that is off from the rest of it. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Anything on Fire Department? Maria? Nothing?
Just a staff update attachment that's in George's packet there.
Okay.
And Fire Chief of the Year.
Yep. Congratulations again on being the Fire Chief of the Year for Guadalupe County. It's fantastic. All right, moving on to executive session. Item number 13, the city council will convene in executive session as authorized by the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney, 551.074, Personnel Matters, and 551.072, Real Property, to describe, I'm sorry, to deliberate and seek legal advice regarding the following. A, Texas Commission on Law Enforcement Practices Impacting City Personnel to Make a Course in Scope of Employment Determination Regarding a Related Conduct of Lieutenant B. Nipper, Officer B. Baldass, former police, I'm sorry, former Chief of Police, Huggins, and former Officer A. Cortez, who remain employed in other capacities, and former officers for legal representation in connection thereto by the city attorney. B, the acquisition of additional real property, which would otherwise place the city in a disadvantage during real estate purchase negotiations if conducted in open session. The time is now 10:35 PM. We will break into executive session now.
Mr. Edson.
Ann Mahoney.
All right, the time is now 11:19 PM. We are resuming from executive session. Can I, do I hear a resolution on agenda item number 13A?
Make a resolution to move forward from the direction of our council in executive session.
I'll second that.
Hey, real quick, is that okay, Mr. Attorney, the way, the way he stated it?
If you, just give me a moment, let me get the caption for the resolution.
Okay. Okay.
Well, we got a couple of seconds, buddy. Okay, I'll restate it. I'll make a resolution for 13A, Texas Commission of Law Enforcement, enforcement practices impacting city personnel to make a course and scope of employment determination regarding the related conduct of Lieutenant P. Nipper, or B. Nipper, Officer H. Baldarris, former Chief Police Chief Huggins, and former Officer Cortez, and other officers in legal representation in connection thereof by the city attorney, make a resolution to give them direction to move forward with what was discussed in executive session.
Okay, electronic vote, please. Aye, Savitt, seven zero.
And I'll give 13B, I give direction to city manager's office and city attorneys to move forward in discussing real property which would otherwise place the city in a disadvantaged real estate purchase negotiations in conduct of, in open session.
I'll second that.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned.